Twenty-one. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item on the agenda is citizen input for items not published on the agenda. And I see Mr. Bae, you are ready to go, huh? It's front and center. So we'll start with you this morning.
Okay. Okay. So I think I'm connected. You can hear me?
Yes.
Well, good morning. Today I would like to speak about the County Road Department's Hennel Road Improvement Project. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to do on behalf of the Hennel United Neighbors, and some of those neighbors are here over there, those three guys, and they are here to keep me in line. From the information we have been able to gather, this improvement project will start and be finished before any planned improvements on Highway ninety-seven and twenty will start or be completed. At this time of the year and in the winter, many visitors are coming to Ben to enjoy the recreation opportunities in our area. This results in heavy traffic jams on both highways, and drivers obviously are looking for ways around the traffic jams that will also be made worse by future improvement projects on Highway ninety-seven and twenty. If Hennel Road Improvement work is completed first, the road will become the ideal cut through to avoid traffic jams. This will result in three negative outcomes. First, once drivers have used Hennel Road as a cut through, they will keep doing so in the future, and traffic on this road will increase dramatically. Second, a large increase in traffic on Hennel Road will endanger people recreating in this corridor, running, bicycling, walking as groups, or with their kids and pets. And the third negative outcome would be that any increase in traffic will be a very serious safety concern for the camp of homeless residents on Hennel Road between Cooley and local roads. The road width is already reduced to barely two lanes, and sometimes one lane by parked RVs, trucks, and cars. Many of those residents walk around the road and do not always pay attention to traffic coming at them. Heavy traffic could result in serious accidents. We would like to ask you to coordinate the improvement project on Hennel Road with construction projects on Highway ninety-seven and twenty, so that Hennel does not become the de facto cut through while those construction projects are carried out. Not doing so will put many residents at risk of serious injury. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much for joining us today. And yeah. Next, a request to speak is Greg Bryant.
My name is Greg Bryant from Deschutes River Woods, and it's pertaining to a fire ban. And what it is, is Oregon Department of Forestry has no fire, says they cannot have any fires of any kind other than if they're using it for warming or cooking, and it can only be natural gas, propane or pro- mutane gas is all they can use. They can't use any other fires or anything. No fire can have a possibility of any embers flying in the air. And that's for, and that, they also are responsible for Deschutes River Woods also. Now, the Rural Fire Department, number two, they have the same requirements, but they haven't said you can have a screen over a fire, a warming fire, and so therefore you could have wood or whatever it is. Okay. But since ODF has the most stricter one, that's what the, the fire departments are going by. Now, I'd like for the commissioners to make a ban on the fire because it's not necessarily different from a publicity standpoint, because I think if you, the more people that know about it and have it recorded in the, in the news is the fact that if we can save one fire, it's one, one less possibility of a bootleg fire that we would have. So that, that's why I'm here for. I want to make sure. And I think we ought to do it through August thirty-first, just like the city of Ben has done. That's, that's my, that's my take on it, and hope you will go forth with that.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Greg.
Is there anybody else requesting to speak on citizen input? Is there anybody on Zoom or on a phone call? Seeing none, okay. At this time, consent agenda, just two sets of minutes today?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Probably not. So Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Okay. At this time, we will convene as the governing body of Black Butte Ranch County Service District. This is item number three, signature of a collective bargaining labor agreement between Black Butte Ranch County Service District, the Police Services, and General Teamsters Local Three Twenty-four.
Commissioners, yes, you have before you document twenty-two-one-six-two-one, which is the collective bargaining agreement that has been tentatively approved pending your approval as the governing body. Chief Van Meter, I believe, is available on Zoom. I'm not sure, but he, he was going to be available if the board had any questions or-
Looks like he may be stepping in now.
-to ask him any, anything about the bargaining. Bruce Bischoff handled that for Black Butte Ranch, or the Service District, but I know the chief was intimately involved with it. I did provide you with a staff report that highlighted some of the changes between the current expiring contract and, and this new five-year contract. This five-year contract, it's retroactive to July one, twenty-twenty, so it's, it's essentially four additional new years. And so I'm prepared to answer any questions that might be there in the agenda request staff report. And as I indicated, the chief is on Zoom if you have questions for him.
Chief, thanks for joining us. You might have been cut out real quick while you were being transferred into this active meeting, but thank you for joining us. Yeah, any, any comments? And welcome. I'm sure this is-
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, just thank you for the time to evaluate this CBA and the signatures if you, if you see fit. Thank you for your time.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Oh, can I ask about the fire in Black Butte? I heard there was a house fire this morning. Did they get that out?
Yes, ma'am. Glazed, one of the glazed metal houses had a fire that only affected the outside of the structure. All indications, it points to recent construction, which was the point of origin of the fire. So it's minor smoke damage inside the house, and nobody was injured. And Black Butte Fire Department knocked it down really, really fast. So no indication of arson at this point.
Great. Thank you for that update.
There we go. Real-time information.
I know. Well, I heard it when I was driving to town, and I was-
Yeah.
Yeah. Had to ask.
Okay. Well, so acknowledging, you know, there was also Bruce Bischoff negotiating on behalf of the district also involved with this. So it's good to see that in five-year agreement. So that's always a, you know, goal is to get out there a few years, hopefully. So congratulations on that.
At least getting out four years.
Yeah. 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 Well, exactly. Yep.
Commissioner, for the benefit of Commissioner Chang, I'm not sure if you're familiar with Bruce Bischoff, but he's a longtime labor lawyer. He's kind of known as the godfather of labor law in, in Oregon. He's, he's, and he represents quite a few employers throughout the state in, in bargaining contracts. He's, on occasion, the counties utilized him for stuff as well. So Bruce is a very well-known labor attorney, and he, he has worked exclusively for a lot of years with Black Butte, does some work for Sun River. He's COCC's labor lawyer. Jefferson County uses him. A lot of cities and counties throughout Oregon have used him over the years. So-
Good to know. Thank you.
Give you a little background. Sorry. Heard that earlier.
Appreciate it.
And then I'll-
So I, I have no questions. I just was gonna make the motion for board signature of document number twenty-two-one-six-two-one, the collective bargaining labor agreement between Black Butte Ranch Country Service District, Police Services, and the General Teamsters Local Three Twenty-four.
I'll, I'll second. I do have a question I want to ask after we vote.
Well, we, yeah, go, let's go for conversation, because I have one more thing, too.
Yeah. So within the county, we have been trying to harmonize our, essentially, points of negotiations among county departments. And the term, it, it, just at first glance, it looks like the terms for, for this contract are maybe a little bit better than, than some of what we're negotiating with, within the county. And I, I know, I a hundred percent understand that this service district is a separate entity. But I was wondering, to what extent are, are we within the county trying to, trying to kind of match or keep, you know, keep up with various service districts that we're involved with as well?
Commissioners, honestly, we have largely not tried, ever tried to align with service district CBAs. We do, as you pointed out, try and align bargaining unit contracts within sort of the central county organization, but not frankly with the service districts. Both Sun River and Black Butte kind of operate independently in terms of their, you know, the issues that are important to them with respect both to wages and other contract provisions.
Right. Right. And I would, again, I, that, that question doesn't affect my support for proceeding with this, with this contract at all. I was just curious, kind of in a broader, broader context about kind of how, how we, you know, how we track other taxing districts and, and, and what they're doing, and, and, you know, whether we, whether we view them as comps, or, you know, you know, you know, data points that we consider when we're looking at our contracts.
Certainly, the other county service districts and the county proper unions will be aware of this agreement. You know, one thing, I believe their, their CPI year is April to April, which is, ours is January to January. So that has captured, I think, quite a bit more of the inflation ergo, the much higher COLA for the current July twenty-twenty-one. So that's a factor in which, which of those CPI indexes you use, not only the location, but the timing of it. And I believe in talking to Bruce Bischoff yesterday that, that Black Butte is, for years, has utilized the April to April CPI, and the county uses the January to January. And so that's one factor in, in some of those dollar, those number differences.
Thank you.
I do know that.
Yeah. Well, so there's been a motion and a second. One other acknowledgement, this is a partnership with the managing board of the Black Butte Ranch Service District. So this has been, you know, pre-approved by that group here at this point in time. So we are the governing body of that district for the tax bill purposes. But yeah, there's already coordination among their board, I'm sure, to accept this. So with that, anything else? Calling for the vote, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Congratulations and thank you. We can go, go backwards and forwards on this with the dates of this one.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Have a great day.
Thank you. Please keep the traffic down on Highway twenty. A couple of years ago, the speeding was really over the top. So I know you guys pay attention there. Now, remember, a couple of people were killed? I think it was in nineteen-
Yeah, it's really high speed.
Oh, my gosh. It was such a mess. And somebody was clocked going one-hundred-and-twenty-six miles an hour. So a bit fast.
Understood. So at this time, convening as the governing body of the Deschutes County nine-one-one Service District, a resolution correcting fiscal year budget.
Thank you, Commissioners. Dan Emerson, Budget Manager. Yes, so the budget was, that you saw on the proposed and the approved was correct. This was just simply a ten-key error when we were typing up the legal resolution that added five-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-seven-zero-nine to reserves instead of public safety. So we're just asking to correct kind of that Scribner's error and move it back at this point in time.
Great. Well, this is a great opportunity for double-checking, making sure what we, what we publish is what we intended on publishing, so.
Yeah, correct. Welcome any questions, if there's any additional questions there.
If not, I'll, I'll move approval of resolution number twenty-two-one-dash-oh-five-five, increasing appropriations and decreasing reserves within the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, Deschutes County budget.
I'll second it, but I, I did have a question, because this actually went to employees, and it's not like six-hundred thousand or an even number. It's, you know, it's just, it's all a bunch of different digits. And I was just, you know, it made me rather nervous that it's almost, it's over half a million dollars. And, okay, somehow it got out of employees, and of course, it went into reserve, but it just seemed like a strange number to have this kind of thing happen.
Right. Let me clarify. So it actually was in the budget correctly, but then when we adopted the resolution, we legally, for that time period, need to change the budget to what we adopted. And what happened was during the resolution twenty-two-one-zero-forty-one, there was some kind of ten-key error. I couldn't be sure, but basically, we're manually entering what that public safety section is, what the reserve section is. And unfortunately, the public safety section was decreased by that kind of random amount, and the reserves was increased. And so once that was adopted, we run a budget check and noticed that what was in munis and what you had seen on the proposed and approved was different than, for whatever reason, what was in the legal resolution. Legally, we have to change the budget to what the resolution is. And then I chose to take it out of employees, just because it's the easiest to put back in. And then, so, and then I came to you guys to put it back in and resolve that error.
Okay. So it really does go back to the employees, then?
Yes. I mean, there's many categories. I could have taken that five-ninety-one out to balance. Employees was, was the largest, and then came back to you and said it, we can't, it's unclear exactly where that number, five-nine-one-seven-zero-nine, came. Both Greg and myself looked at it. It would have just been when someone was manually entering it, they put it in reserves, and then, as opposed to public safety. So, yeah.
Well, this is the public process in fixing those numbers. But yeah, thanks for the scrutiny on that. I understood.
Well, I just was like, hmm, this is like, this is some material. It's over half a million. So, you know, I'm glad we have to see it again.
No, I appreciate the, the questions, and it's definitely, we do run about four different budget checks after the resolution to make sure that every single fund and department is, is correct, and that's, that's the one that got away from us there.
Well, I know. I was worried about my carryover, my discretionary fund a couple of years ago, and somehow my seven-hundred-and-eighteen dollars disappeared or something. Anyway, so I knew about that. And this is way bigger.
Okay. Any other-
We caught it.
Yeah, there you go. I'll say, calling for the vote, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Reconvening as the governing body of Deschutes County, item number five, public hearing. So this is a consideration of vacating a portion of Cook Avenue.
Morning, everyone. For the record, Cody Smith, county engineer, Deschutes County Road Department. This morning, we're going to be holding a public hearing for a proposed vacation for a portion of the right-of-way for Cook Avenue. I'm going to share my screen here. And I will begin my presentation here.
All right.
So a quick little agenda for this hearing. I'm going to provide some background information here on the, on the proposed vacation, present the road department's findings and recommendations for this proposed vacation, and then ask the board chair to open the public hearing. And then after, after the public hearing, I'm, I'm going to ask the board to hit, to take up consideration of order number twenty-two-one-dash-zero-one-five. So Oregon revised statutes, three-sixty-eight-point-three-twenty-six to three-sixty-eight-three-sixty-six, provide the county with a procedure for the vacation of public roads, public property, or other public property interests that are under our jurisdiction. The county road department has received a petition for the vacation of a small portion of Cook Avenue that was dedicated to the public with the townsite of Laid Law Platte that was recorded back in nineteen-oh-four. The petition that we received was not signed by one-hundred percent of the abutting property owners for the subject right-of-way. So under ORS three-sixty-eight-three-forty-six, we're required to hold a public hearing for the board to consider this matter. So quickly, here, this is a location map of, of the area we're talking about. So this is, this is in the south portion of the unincorporated community of Tumalo. It's along Obey Riley Road, south of the Knife River property there. That's along Highway twenty. It's highlighted there in yellow on the map on the screen there. So the chief petition, the petitioners for this proposed vacation are Patrick Todd, who is the owner of Tax Lot forty-five-hundred that's outlined there in red. Patrick Todd's the chief petitioner. Other petitioner is Sarah Whitney, the owner of Tax Lot forty-six-hundred. That's the tax lot, the tax lot that's outlined there in orange. Oregon Parks and Recreation Department, who are the owners of Tax Lot two-hundred that's outlined there in purple, were not, were not signers of the petition that we received. I'd note that the, the frontage for the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department frontage along this, the subject right-of-way here is less than ten feet. Appears to be about nine feet, based on the tax maps. The total, total area of the proposed vacated area is point-one-four acres. And the, the petition for vacation included a request to have the entirety of the vacated property inured at Tax Lot forty-six-hundred, which again is the tax lot that's outlined in orange there. Under ORS three-sixty-eight-three-sixty-six-two, the Board of Commissioners can determine vesting of vacated property in a vacation order. So I want to note that the segments of Cook Avenue north of this, south of Highway twenty and north of this proposed vacation were previously vacated. Last year, the Board of County Commissioners adopted order number twenty-twenty-dash-zero-four-zero, which vacated the right-of-way for Cook Avenue across Tax Lot forty-five-hundred there to the north. Back in two-thousand-two, when the county extended and or realigned Obey Riley Road to connect with Highway twenty and Cook Avenue, and abandoned, effectively abandoned the segment of Cook Avenue between Obey Riley Road and Highway twenty, the, the segment of right-of-way for Cook Avenue crossed what's now the Knife River property was vacated. So notice of the petition that, that the road department received, and also notice of public hearing, was mailed out to adjoining property owners and affected utilities and agencies. We, road department only received one comment in response to the notices. That comment was from Pacific Power, who had requested that the county reserve a twenty-foot-wide utility easement, or that the property owner, the underlying property owner, record an easement benefiting Pacific Power. In response to this, the, the petitioners for this proposed vacation have already recorded an easement to benefit Pacific Power. No, no comments were received from any of the other utility companies or agencies that were contacted, and no comments were received from Oregon Parks and Recreation Department as the, as an adjoining landowner.
Quick question.
Yes.
On the last slide. So that, just to, for my information, the deed number, what's that numbering system? Is that a county deed number? Is that a county numbering system?
That's a, that's a deed that's actually recorded at the clerk's office. That's in the official records at the clerk's office.
Okay. Yep. That was my question. Thank you.
So with all that, the, the road department has made the following findings. The subject right-of-way was dedicated to the public on the townsite of Laid Law Platte. Recorded is document number nineteen-eighteen-dash-twenty-seven in the office of the county clerk, Deschutes County, Oregon. This meets the requirements of ORS three-sixty-eight-three-twenty-six. The proposed vacation will not deprive access to any owners of a recorded property right. That meets the requirement of ORS three-sixty-eight-three-thirty-one. The petitioners who represent the owners of more than sixty percent of property abutting the subject right-of-way have submitted a complete petition and submitted the required fee. That meets various requirements under ORS three-sixty-eight regarding vacations. As the petition for vacation does not include acknowledged signatures of owners of one-hundred percent of property abutting the proposed vacation area, the vacation proceedings are subject to a public hearing, which we are conducting right now. And the subject right-of-way does not appear to be needed for current or future public use. And also note with that, that this segment of, of Cook Avenue is not currently maintained by Deschutes County. This, this, this segment effectively is serving as the driveway access for the properties that are owned by the petitioners.
Question again here. A hundred percent-
Yes.
-property abutting. So you're, you're saying that nine-foot section of state park connectivity is, is the part that's less than one-hundred percent?
Correct.
So if the state park system was able to respond in a timely fashion, I'm just thinking, they probably don't, it's just not high on their radar, is why they wouldn't respond possibly.
Yeah. So, so first, because they weren't, they weren't a party to the petition that was submitted to the county, which I, I don't know that the petitioners made an attempt to contact the Parks Department to, to, to gain their, their signature for the petition. Second, the Oregon Parks and Rec Department, they were notified, once our department received the petition, they were, they were served with a notice by certified mail. They were served with a second notice via certified mail when the resolution setting this public hearing occurred a little over a month ago. So Oregon Parks and Rec has, has been served with two notices that, that we know that they've received, and they, it appears they've chosen not to participate in these proceedings and not provide any comments.
Understood. Thank you.
So based on the findings I just gave, the road department has determined that the proposed vacation is in the public interest. The road department recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve the vacation of a portion of the right-of-way of Cook Avenue by adoption of order number twenty-two-one-dash-zero-one-five, subject to the following conditions. One, that no opposition to the vacation is reported to the county prior to this presentation or during this public hearing. Second, that the vacated property shall vest according to the agreement submitted by the petitioners, which is included as part of the, the vacation order as exhibit D, under the authority granted by ORS three-sixty-eight-three-sixty-six-two, which again allows the, allows the Board of Commissioners to determine vesting in a vacation order. So at this time, I'd request that the board chair open the public hearing. And then after public testimony has been given this morning, and subject to any testimony disputing the matter, I'd request that the board chair close the public hearing and that the board consider adoption of order number twenty-two-one-dash-zero-one-five. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the board chair.
Okay. At this time, the public hearing is open on this matter. Is there anyone requesting to speak on the subject? It looks like there's no one in the room. Is there anybody on Zoom? So there's no request to speak on this matter that we observe. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on this matter. So this is order twenty-two-one-dash-zero-one-five. Question, what's the flow of the driveways? So they both come off Obey Riley in front of the parcel that, in the proposed vacated area, and then the person goes north? So it looks like there's a hard barrier at the north edge of Tax Lot.
Yeah. Let me get back to the-
Forty-five-hundred, yeah. Forty-five-hundred has no access from the north.
What? I'm sorry. Say that again?
Looks like forty-five-hundred, the northern parcel, doesn't have access from the north. That's a-
They, they do not have access from the north. That's correct. So forty-five-hundred, again, who again was a petitioner for this proposed vacation- So 4500, again, who again was a petitioner for this proposed vacation, they will have frontage on Obie Riley Road. They will continue to have access across Tax Lot 4600, subject to this vacation. The, the, these two, the, these two properties are owned by a husband and wife, both. My understanding that, I wasn't provided with a copy of it, but my understanding was that an access easement for Tax Lot 4500 was, was going to be implemented. That, in general, as, as there's no pending land use or other things here, that's, that's not really a concern to the road department at this point. And then also, in this case, both the owners of Tax Lot 4500 and 4600 provided forms acknowledging their consent that, that they would be theoretically, are potentially losing access or frontage to a public road in this case. They're not losing frontage, but Tax Lot 4500 is technically losing the frontage where their, where their, their current access is, but they're not necessarily losing an access right or losing frontage completely.
Understood. So yeah, the, the right-of-way access to that 4500 is, is a separate matter. I mean, if there was to be some official agreement for access.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I'd point out too, we did the, last summer, the board vacated that segment of road, the segment of Cook Avenue immediately north of this. I'm not really, I don't really understand why the, and it was the same petitioner in that case, I'm not really sure why they didn't just request vacation of the entire, this entire south segment of the Cook Avenue right-of-way at that time. I think this was kind of a, an afterthought, but, but when, when the, when that portion of the Tax Lot 4500 was vacated, at that time, the property line configuration here was different. Knife River actually owned more of the frontage along Obie Riley Road there. So subject to that vacation from last year, the owner of 4500 Knife River implemented a property line adjustment, adjusted the property line boundaries to what you see here now. So, so this, this all looked different a year ago.
Okay. And then 201 is, what's the information about that little strip?
So 201 doesn't, doesn't presently have any frontage to a, to a public right-of-way. The owner of Tax, Tax Lot 4600 is also the owner of Tax Lot 201.
Okay.
I, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure what, what, how 201, how that property was created, except I do know that that tax lot, Tax Lot 4600 is within the Laidlaw Platt. It's a, it's a consolidation of several lots from the Laidlaw Platt. Tax Lot 201 is outside of the Laidlaw Platt, created by some separate instrument, but both under the same ownership.
Okay. Okay, so a public hearing has been closed, and any other discussion, or is there a motion?
Well, can, can I just double-check something with Cody? I, I think you clarified this for me earlier, but I just wanted to double-check, vacating this, vacating this piece of right-of-way does not in any way impact the road department's ability to, to do what's needed on Obie Riley Road?
That's correct.
And in the shoulder area there.
That's correct. I mean, if that, if that was the case, we would not be recommending for, that this was in the public interest. Yeah, no, road department doesn't have any, any current or future needs for this right-of-way here, or if Obie Riley was to be, there's no plans for any improvements on Obie Riley Road, but even if Obie Riley Road were to be improved, you know, through shoulder, shoulder widening, even if it was, if we're talking about sidewalks or other things in the future, the existing 60-foot right-of-way there would be all that we'd need for those improvements. You know, that's not to say at some point, you know, 50 years in the future, and Obie Riley's being widened to four lanes, this, this small chunk of right-of-way might be nice to have then, but, but there's going to be, there's going to be a lot of right-of-way that would be needed by that point. So in, in the context of our, of our, of our current and anticipated future needs here, we don't need this piece of right-of-way.
Thank you.
Oh, Cody, it's Commissioner Dare, and I did notice it's Exhibit C, but it doesn't seem like it's referenced in the order, but Patrick is actually with one T, Patrick Todd. And so I didn't know if that was, it doesn't look like that goes into the official record, but his, his name is signed with one T. So if that one goes into the official, it doesn't appear to, I just thought that should be corrected.
Okay, I can, I can take a look at that, and if something needs to be fixed there, we can get that fixed.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move we approve Order Number 2021-015, the vacating a portion of the Cook Avenue.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you for the thorough preparation and discussion on this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Cody.
Item number six, consideration of board's signature of an amendment to the service contract for Clean Harbors Environmental Services.
Good morning. Chad Santola, interim director of Department of Solid Waste. This item before you is amending the agreement we have with Clean Harbors Environmental Services to extend the contract for a second year. When we, when we solicit for these services, we structure the agreements where we have the ability to extend the contract up to two additional years. Clean Harbors has been doing a great job for us, and we're, we're up for renewal on, on the contract for this year. They, they've requested a 2.59% increase in fees across the, across the board on it, which I determine were pretty fair and reasonable. Some of their itemized costs that they provided, fuel, labor, health insurance, are well above 2.59%. And I think they like to hold their cost increases low with us, because our program is a very desirable one for them to have. They, they all enjoy coming to Deschutes County for, for the program, and it's a really successful program for us. So my, our recommendation is that the board approve an amendment to extend the contract for a year or two.
Great. Couple questions. As I look at the packaging transportation and management table, so this is packet 54. First item talks about paint-related materials, paints and stains. So just acknowledging, so there is a paint recycling program in the state of Oregon, and these are other dollars we have to spend in support of paint recycling?
Well, actually, the, the consumer spends the dollars for the state's paint recycling program. If you buy a gallon of paint at Home Depot, there's actually a line on your receipt that, that shows how much of your, your bill actually goes to the state of Oregon for the state's paint program. We, we collect a lot of paint through the recycling center at Knott Landfill that is, goes through the state's program. There is no direct cost to Deschutes County for that service. The consumer pays for that. The, the paint that's on the agreement with Clean Harbors are paints that are not included in the state's program, two-part epoxy paints, or some other specialty kind of paints that are not accepted in the state's program. So the, when those show up at our household house waste offense, Clean Harbors takes those away, and we pay for them.
Okay, so that is truly a different set of products that are not charged that fee?
That's correct.
Okay, good. That's great, because when I saw it, I'm like, are we paying for it twice, a subset of it, but?
When that, when that program came up, before the, the state's program came up, half of what we were paying for our household house waste program was for paint-related materials. And when the state's program started, we reduced our budget for this by about 50%. It was a huge savings for the county.
We've seen that.
Yeah.
Wonderful. So the other one is fluorescent tubes. Are, is there a path of reducing fluorescent tube disposal, as in, I know they, it's a mercury issue, I think, and there's been a lot of just evolution in the industry, and you know, is there any thoughts on, I just think it's probably a declining?
It is, and I'm glad you asked about it, because this is a remarkable number. So we pay for fluorescent tubes by the foot through Clean Harbor, so I know exactly how much.
More than eight foot, yep.
Last year, we collected and recycled over 13 miles of fluorescent tubes through the house waste program. They, those are 100% recyclable, the glass is recyclable, the aluminum end caps are recyclable, the mercury itself is recyclable, and the other powder product goes into cement manufacturing with it. You know, the, the trend is likely going downward. I really haven't looked year to year to see what we're seeing on what we collect in fluorescent tubes and, and the CFL bulbs. But I don't myself personally, I moved to, to LED lighting in our house, and I think a lot of people are moving that way. The cost of LEDs is going down. There is no mandate or directive for the public to do anything with that, but I, I think that the industry trend is definitely getting away from fluorescent tubes. You know, originally, they were the energy-efficient solution to the traditional incandescent bulb, and LEDs have now become the energy-efficient alternative.
And I guess, is there a non-mercury version of fluorescent tubes that doesn't need this kind of disposal, is my, is where I was going with it?
There, there's a low mercury alternative. If you look at fluorescent tubes, they'll have a green cap on the end, those are low mercury alternative, but they still have mercury in them, so.
They still need to be disposed of in this fashion?
They still need to be properly managed.
Okay, yeah, that was kind of my question. Is there one that's no mercury, but there isn't? If it's fluorescent, it's?
Yeah, mercury is the active ingredient to get a fluorescent light to work.
Okay. And it's the active ingredient that means it needs to be disposed of in this fashion?
Right.
Okay, well, yeah, there's just two items.
That was great. I learned a whole bunch about my barn lighting.
Yeah.
I knew I had to recycle them, though.
And the, and the lights that are right above us. Chad, I'm, I'm curious, so this, this company, if I was reading this correctly, is from Massachusetts?
That's where their headquarters is. When we do this, the solicitation of this program, for all intents and purposes, there are only two vendors nationwide that provide the service, Clean Harbors and Stericycle. Prior to Clean Harbor, Stericycle had it. They seem to rotate with us about every three years, and they sharpen their pencil and try to get below the competition. So there aren't a lot of vendors that provide this, this type of service. And the ones that have provided are absorbed by Clean Harbors and Stericycle.
Yeah, I was, I was just kind of wondering about the state of the industry, whether it's, whether it was, you know, whether it was a couple of large national companies, or whether there was, there was a, you know, more regional or, or local?
Yeah, it's exactly what it is. It's, it's large regional company, or nationwide companies, excuse me.
Got it. Thank you. So, and this is the second of one-year extensions?
Correct. No, the first.
The first of the one-year extensions.
If we continue having a successful relationship with Clean Harbors, and they keep their pencils sharp, I'll be back next year for year three with you.
We're good. Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
I hope move approval of board signature of document number 2021-555, an amendment to the services contract with Clean Harbors Environmental Services.
And I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion?
I just want to say their raise of 2.59% is extremely lenient when you're looking at the biggest raise ever for, what is it, social security, they're saying, perhaps up to 6.1%. It's the highest in, like, a long time. So if that comes into effect for all the millions of Americans on social security.
Thank you. Seeing nothing else, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you. At this time, item number seven, discretionary grant review. There's a binder associated with this one.
I know you love getting binders. For the record, Laura Skundrick, administrative analyst, here to discuss the first quarter of fiscal year '22 for the discretionary grant program. Each quarter, the Board of Commissioners reviews applications that were submitted to the program and makes awards accordingly. And today, the board will consider these requests for the first quarter of fiscal year '22. As a reminder, for this fiscal year, the board allocated $60,000 of video lottery funds for discretionary grants, and $15,000 for fundraising grants. So that's what we're starting with today. And if you'd like, just to start from the beginning, we have our spreadsheet here, if you're able to see that. Can we make that a little bit bigger? Not sure. Thank you. That's perfect. All right, so first up, we have Assistance League of Bend. They are requesting $2,500. This would support their operation School Bell, which would provide new clothing for about 2,000 to 3,000 low-income K through 12 students in Deschutes County.
Laura, can I ask one, one kind of background question before we dive right into it?
Of course.
So I came in sort of at the tail end of the cycle, of the annual cycle last year. So we are starting this year with kind of a, an allocation of 20,000 that's supposed, theoretically is supposed to carry us through four quarters?
Yes.
Okay. So I, that gives me a sense of how much, how much we have to work with.
Theoretically.
So I'm happy to do 1,000 for Assistance League. I don't think we've given him anything since last summer when we had that extra funding left. Remember when we divided it, I think, so it came out to 17, 18 per, it was our fifth quarter, wasn't it?
Yeah. See, and then Commissioner Chang, as I say, the fifth quarter. So we've, we've got the, the fund of video lottery, we do other things with it, and then you find if there's other resources, we can allocate other, another quarter, the fifth quarter.
Yes, I know. It didn't make any sense, did it?
Well, just the way it ended up happening. So 500 for me for Assistance League Bend.
And Commissioner Dare, what, what amount did you say?
1,000.
1,000, okay, thank you.
I mean, when you see their advertisements, these are kids that have never had their own new shoes, their own first t-shirt. I mean, something actually new. They take them to targeted shopping, and it's really, it's, it's, it breaks your heart.
Yes, great program, for sure.
500 for me as well, please.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have the Clear Alliance request for $3,000. This would support their summer interns. They will be assisting administration to promote the launch of their updated materials, which you may recall, we supported that update in a previous quarter, last year in quarter three. So they'll be getting those materials out to the community, and those interns will be working from June through September. This would cover those months.
So a couple thoughts here. Everybody's looking for employees right now, so interns for Clear Alliance is an interesting concept. And I, I deduced that I'd support 500 again, so my intention would be one intern opposed to two, but I'm not telling the other commissioners what to do, just what I was thinking, you know, so.
I was, as I was reading through this proposal, I was hoping to see some metrics, just, you know, if you can't, if you, if you don't have a sense of how many people you're going to reach with your, your pamphlet or your video in the, you know, that you're developing right now in the future, or with your, with your interns, at least kind of metrics of, you know, what, what your, what your impact has been previously? And, you know, the, the lack of metrics was, I just didn't, I didn't, I felt like it would have made the proposal stronger, to have a, have sense of how many people are being touched by the...
I believe they've had their program in 30 of 36 counties in Oregon. It's pretty unbelievable what they've done. Mandy's been running the program for quite a while. Because we just did give them 2,000, I'll do, I'll match Commissioner DeBonne at this moment and do another 500. So hopefully that will get them, well, what are they, they're asking for three, so.
Was it say, yeah, it was two interns? So you divide that by, the request by two, was what I came to?
Well, I'll, I'll do 1,000 then, so that they can get, they can get one intern. And hopefully at $15 an hour, they can get one intern.
Okay, thank you. So next up, we have council on aging. They are requesting $1,700. This would replace their canopies after a windstorm damaged one and completely destroyed the other. This funding would also include weights to keep the canopies now down, so this wouldn't happen again, as well as branding, adding their branding to the canopies.
It happens, years ago, Frontier Days has a set of tents in southern Deschutes County. And if you put, if you put... And if you put, if you put tents up for the weekend, early in the year or late in the year, all of a sudden, you end up with two inches of snow and then the poles get bent. So I've been there, I've seen it happen. So, and this was a windstorm event, but it's just amazing how that can happen.
Yes, you never know.
$600 for myself, so it seemed to be in that range.
See, my question is because they are a service partner and we give them 40,000 already. But this is something in addition to that 40,000.
That is correct. So, and you can see on the cover sheet what that service partner funding supports. It does support an FTE for their Meals on Wheels and congregate dining. So it is specific use of those funds for them. So this is, yes, this would be in addition to that.
And I spoke with Alice Ivy. She is the development manager, she says. So she knows that, she's basically always going to come to us with a small ask during these cycles just because, I mean, they always have needs and there's just a relationship there. So I'm just letting you know, I know who they are and they know they're going to basically apply almost, I don't know if they do it every time, but once a year or twice a year even.
I scrutinized their space heaters or their outside heaters pretty closely this last winter. So I'd like to put in 750 on this.
Great.
So I'll make up the difference so they get their 1,700?
Sure.
So what, 350?
Something like that. Something like that.
Yeah, 350.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Earthwin. They are requesting $2,500 for their Eco Club Video Challenge. The funds would be used to create a program website and a flyer for the challenge. And they would plan to continue using these in future years for the same challenge. This is an opportunity for middle schoolers to potentially win a monetary prize to create their own Eco Club at their schools. So Earthwin, we haven't heard from them before. If you're not familiar, their mission is to educate and grow awareness of mindful living for global well-being. Their focus and they strive to empower children and adults by helping them realize that their actions make a difference.
So I'm not interested in investing in this one at this time. I don't mind getting to know who's behind this and what's going on. It is, does mention the school district and middle school students. You know, so there may be other ways to do this. But once again, just like every time, I'd love to know who's behind it and have a relationship so you can, you know, notify them that, yeah, please call Commissioner DeBonne and we'll get to know each other too.
Great. Thank you.
Similarly, I'm, I, with all the important projects we have in front of us, I'm reluctant to put anything into this project right now, given that, you know, I very much support the goals of this project. But I also think that there's actually quite a lot going on in our schools already. You know, so kids have the opportunities to plug into environmental clubs or an environmental elective, or not electives, but, you know, for example, my son, you know, that's one of the things that they can do with the, with the kind of flex period at the end of the day, once a week, is participate in a group, you know, a group that's working on things like this, so.
Okay, thank you.
And another little bit of feedback is, you know, when they mentioned that within the schools, it'd be wonderful to have a reference to the school, you know, somebody in the school is writing a letter saying,
Right.
we're going to work together in some fashion, you know.
How this, how this fits.
It'd be great if they would come in and do a presentation.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sure they would be happy to. Okay. Thank you. Next up, we have Family Kitchen and Camp are working together. They're requesting a $550 sponsorship of their film screening event. They hope this will raise awareness about current and upcoming low-barrier housing solutions. So they'll be showing a documentary of one woman's experience staying at a managed camp in Seattle. And they've requested the use of the Deschutes County logo as well as a commissioner to present welcoming remarks at their event.
So I like the idea of this. I don't know that this is the right fund for it. Let's put this with the Homeless Leadership Coalition. And if the HLC wants to advocate for dollars, you know, once again, it's kind of a reference. You know, this is, it's, you know, Family Kitchen idea. But man, this is the topic of the day. So let's redirect this to that effort at this point in time. And if it's a partnership with the city of Bend, you know, I mean, I could see myself being involved with something like this. So it's just kind of the set of funds.
I'm inclined to support this. I think that there's a whole lot of discussion about managed camps right now. And this, this video that kind of gives like an inside view of what life, you know, who is living in places like this and how they're living, I think is a, could potentially a very valuable contribution to the discussion right now. So I, I would, I'd like to support this with at least 250. And if neither of my colleagues are interested in putting funds into this, then I'd increase that.
So I'll do 250.
Great, thank you.
I'll do 50.
Okay.
Okay.
I was saying, I mean, I just trying to categorize that somewhere else, that's all.
Exactly. I can understand that.
But each of these groups, you know, Family Kitchen and all the other service providers, they each, there's a reason that there's a number of groups. They each kind of have their own, their own role and voice. And Family Kitchen has been an extremely important player in homeless services in our region.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Habitat for Humanity, Lapines Sun River. They are requesting $2,500 for their Critical Home Repair Program, serving low-income homeowners. This includes plumbing, electric, roof insulation, heating, access ramps, all sorts of repairs that will be done to keep people in the homes they're already in and keep them safe. The program will serve about 20 to 40 families throughout the year with this funding.
And I'll be happy to do $1,000. I know how expensive it is when you need something done on your home. And, you know, for some people, it's overwhelming at times.
Absolutely.
So I was at the Rotary, Sun River Rotary event. There was a discussion about, you know, water, water system failures, well failures right now. And that's a call they're getting once in a while, too. And those are tough because even if there's resources, there's a long lead time for any well activity right now. But yeah, so on top of everything you mentioned in their application, well, water systems. I'll do 1,000 also, knowing that, you know, this, wherever it goes, it'll be well invested.
And I'll, and I'll add the 500 to get them to 2,500.
There we go.
And also just flag, you know, we, it's a very separate request, but, but we definitely, you know, I, I hope we can kind of finish sorting through their land requests soon and figure out what we're doing there.
My wife was asked to be on the board of this Habitat group recently. So she's going to be on the other side of this also.
Well, that's good.
Just letting you know.
Does that mean you're going to need to recuse yourself?
I, she hasn't done anything yet, but she was asked, so.
Okay.
But now you know.
Good to know.
The High Desert Education Service District with the Central Oregon STEM Hub is requesting $2,500. These would be used as partial match funds for a $200,000 grant from Oregon Community Foundation for the Ignite Central Oregon Program. They intend to advance opportunities in STEM for rural, low-income students of color and girls in Central Oregon. So they connect students with industry partners for experience and learning opportunities in STEM fields. And their first pilot year, they proposed the plan to implement a program instructor in the construction and manufacturing programs at Madras High School, Kirk County High School, Redmond High School, Bend High, and Lapine.
They have an amazing opportunity here to get a match up to the 200,000.
Yes.
So, and they're asking us for 2,500? I know, I hope they have, you know, an opportunity clearly to get up to the 400,000.
So I'm always hesitant to step into education, knowing that there's, that's its own ecosystem. And once we start to do that, you know, because it's that awkward moment when a classroom teacher fills out an application and said, I got a great idea. And we could just spend all kinds of money down that path. Not that it's a bad thing, but it's just trying to, as I say, draw a little bit of a line there. So I'm hesitant to support this just because of that policy in my mind.
I'm, I, I'm open to partnerships like this. And, you know, STEM education is maybe more important than ever after the pandemic because we've depleted a bunch of our healthcare workforce and we're going to need to replace them. So I would, I'd like to support this with 500 and could possibly go higher.
I'll put zero down for now.
I'll do the 500.
Great, thank you.
Yes, yesterday I heard that the state is funding more money than ever to the schools, you know, K through 12. But my question was, well, is the school year going to be increased? Because, you know, Oregon's school year is the shortest in the nation. And I was told that, well, no, this is an individual school district problem that we have such short school years for our children. So please talk to your school districts and ask them to make us competitive with the rest, the other 49 states.
Wow.
Yeah, I know, isn't that amazing? If we're spending more and yet no one's saying, hey, let's add an ex, I mean, after COVID, should we not add an extra 10 days or something? 20 days, I would think. Because I feel like there were those kids at the bottom that really, they're really at the bottom now. It's, it's a problem.
All right. Next up, we have High Desert Food and Farm Alliance. They are requesting $2,500 to support their Grow and Give program. This collects and donates fresh produce from local farmers and owners to the regional food bank at Neighbor Impact. These, this fresh produce was being donated by farmers. And during the pandemic, they did start paying those farmers for their donations because their established markets were shifting and disappearing. So they are hoping to continue that practice as they found it had a great impact on those farmers.
So the concept of grow and give is so disconnected from the concept of a farmer growing to make a living for a profit so you can live on your land. So just pointing out that it seems like it's a disconnect from what a farmer would do, even though I know they're trying to employ that, you know, make that happen. So as I say, I don't mind funding this in some fashion, but there's a conversation in there too. Because, I mean, I want to get my home garden going too. But growing and giving, the concept is just a disconnect from the purpose of trying to be part of an economy.
I mean, I think if I understand what's happening here correctly, you have, you have local food producers who are, you know, they're, they're growing stuff, they're growing crops and they're, they're selling to, you know, local chefs and restaurants. And, you know, they've got community-supported agriculture boxes and are selling at farmers' markets. And then essentially, the additional cost for them to grow a little more is not, you know, it's an economiescale thing. So they can add a little bit and then they could donate a little bit. And then when someone says, actually, we really appreciate you, you know, offering, you know, offering food to, you know, some of our, some of the, our neighbors here in Central Oregon who are in need, you know, particularly the partnership with, with the food bank. And, you know, that being able to add, you know, to the staples that food banks can get from grocery stores, you know, fresh nutritious, you know, produce. It's, it makes the, it makes the food assistance, the nutritional assistance that much better. So I think this is a, you know, I very much support this program. I guess, you know, you can ask the question, well, if the, if the farmers were willing to just grow that extra little bit before and donate it, you know, is it, are we, how do we feel about, about, you know, paying them for that now? And I, you know, at the current moment, I feel pretty good about it. But so I'd like to put, you know, 500 into this for starters. And we can, at the end, maybe take another look at it.
I'll do 500 also. But yeah, the whole concept of having a little extra and giving it away is a choice of anybody to be able to be, you know, philanthropic with their time and talents and resources. But for us to pay to give, for somebody else to give something away, I mean, the logic chain just falls off for me there. And as I say, I'm supportive of this, but we got to be careful about how we're even saying those words.
Well, as I drove by Rain Shadow Organics last night and I saw their corn, and then I was just in Umatilla County this last weekend and I saw the corn in Umatilla County. They have converted, didn't see any hemp, but their cornfields are enormous. And their corn was like, I know Rain Shadow does a great job, but the corn in Umatilla was like three times bigger. I mean, their corn, you know, because of the growing season that we deal with here in Deschutes County, it's, what is it, the second shortest, right up there with Wallaua. So yeah, what a difference. Yeah, their cornfields were magnificent. Apparently because of the ethanol, the corn price has really gone up. And so that's what a lot of people have converted in the state to corn. It was unbelievable, the cornfields, the number of cornfields that we saw. So anyway, I, you know what, I will have to come back to that one. But I appreciate the idea. I mean, especially when you consider the water and the water that people are getting. It's, you know, they definitely need some kind of economic reward because they're working extra hard in order to make those decisions.
So next, we have Core Community Land Trust. They are requesting $2,500 to upgrade their website. This is a one-time project. This would increase usability for homebuyers and homeowners. Would ensure that lower-income households can easily learn about things like affordable homeownership opportunities. They can apply for educational sessions that are offered and access other resources to use as a homeowner.
I like the work they're doing. I don't know that this is the right investment for these kind of dollars at this point in time. This is very specific effort and organization. And, you know, I mean, it's a good ask, but I'm not supportive at this time.
I'll do 500. I really like their program. It was a pleasure to go to the dedication ceremony the other day and I drove by it. Gosh, when was it like yesterday, I think? You know, coming from the backside and, you know, they've, they've done a lovely job.
Nice.
Yeah, it's really amazing. And met the woman that's going to get to move into her home the first of August. And she just got lucky and got the home and she is so appreciative, so.
Great.
I would, I would put 500 into this as well. I mean, I'd feel, if we, if I knew we were going to do something for them on the land front, kind of like Habitat, if I knew if we were going to do something for them on the land front, it would be easier for me to pass this one up. But we don't know that yet, so.
Thank you. Next up, we have Lapine Community Kitchen requesting $2,500 for their Hot Meals to Go program. With the volume of people they're serving and the size of their dining area, they are still having to provide their hot meals to go, which has significantly increased their costs. So this funding would support that specific program.
Did we just really give them $1,850 June 3rd?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I know, I was going, I highlighted those two. So we did 2,500 and then 1,850. So because of that, I think I'll pass at this moment because I, there's still a couple more that I want to help.
I, I would put 500 into this.
I'll put 500 into it.
Great, thank you. Next up is another new one, The Owls, a Warrior Society. They are requesting $2,500 for support of their summer events. These are trips that they take to experience nature, learn about nature, and connect with nature and themselves. The costs for food, transportation, and sponsorship for kids who could not otherwise attend would be covered by this funding. And, um, this is just a small note about the program. It's a mentorship program for young men to, which focuses on instilling values such as honesty, integrity, courage, and strength.
I, I see this one kind of similar to the Eco, Eco Club video challenge. I don't, I, I don't have a good sense of where this program fits in our community and, and what, you know, how, how much uptake there is, how much impact there it has. So I'd, I'd be hesitant to, to invest in it right now.
Yeah, I'd like to pass at this time also.
Well, I do appreciate what they're trying to strive for. And actually, it's starting tomorrow, the 22nd. Yes, they're leaving tomorrow from Bend. So it sounds like we might be a bit late for this funding. But maybe if they could come in and say, you know what, we took so many kids and this is what we, you know, you know, give us a bit more feedback on the program. I do think it sounds worthwhile.
Okay. Pass that on to them, thank you. Uh, next up is the Ronald McDonald House and they are requesting $2,500 for their Meals from the Heart campaign. This stocks their pantry at the house, their refrigerator and the freezer for families who, to eat while they are staying at the house. Uh, so these funds will continue to keep the pantry full through the end of this year.
I'll do 500. My parents actually had two kids in St., in Doran Becker and in Shriners at the same moment in time. I don't know how my mother survived it, honestly and truly. My one sister had a blood disorder. And when I see something like this and I think, oh my gosh, if they would have had a place to stay like this, you know, those families, it's really, it's such a good program. Because you have so many things to worry about and who does have to worry about feeding, feeding yourselves and, you know. So anyway, thank you for them to ask this.
Uh, 350 for me, which is going to get me back to a round number.
I'll, I'll, I'll put in 250. And, and, yeah, I'm, I'm glad, I'm very glad we were able to support Ronald McDonald House in their expansion plans or renovation plans through the ARPA funds.
Next up, we have Scale House in Central Oregon BIPOC, which is Black Indigenous and People of Color. They are requesting $2,000 for their complexion project, which focuses on local diverse BIPOC artists and writers in three different components. This includes a two-month exhibit, a 40-page zine issue, and education and outreach into the fall. So their outreach is to BIPOC community leaders and residents and connects them with the exhibit and with each other.
Uh, so my, so we've supported Scale House Art, what do we call it?
Arts and Culture Grants.
Well, Scale House, Scale House Arts Exhibit. I'm just looking at the last, the previous dates here, Arts and Culture Grants. So this is the Scale House, which is a gallery, I guess, is, is the idea. Do we have Arts and Culture Grants coming through this year?
Uh, so those are typically reviewed at the end of the year.
End of the fiscal year, end of the calendar year.
Uh, end of the
Today's July, yeah.
So we review those in
Six months from now.
For this year and then we'll review in December for next calendar year.
Yeah.
How come this one is from the, from February 11th then? It says Arts and Culture Grant.
The, these are just grants that we've awarded to them in the past five years. So we've, uh, Scale House has received several, that maybe was a date of payment after they had submitted their signed agreements.
Well, and I, basically, I mean, I'm supportive. This is the kind of thing where it's like, okay, well, if there's this term and there's this thing that we call BIPOC and we want to present that, this is great, let's lay it out there, you know, because I've been struggling with, I mean, it's just new term shows up.
So I'll do $670. It's almost a third, it's a little over a third of my share.
Perfect.
If the other commissioners want to step up with their third or more. They need it for their budget, looking at their budget to balance it. They're depending on one grant from someone else for 1,500 and us for 2,000. So they need this to balance their program.
I would provide 500 for this and we can go back and look at it at the end.
Well, put you, put me down for 650, which puts me at that odd amount again.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, next up is Thrive Central Oregon. They are requesting $2,000 for expansion of their downtown Bend office. This is their primary service location and the funds will help cover necessary furniture and equipment for future staff use and client meetings. So they have grown while they were working remotely for the last year. And as they're coming back into the office, they have needed this new space and now need to furnish it.
Can you, somebody remind me about Thrive specifically?
I thought Thrive got their funding like through United, do they not? I know that they had asked for funding through the Central Oregon Health Council and did get a significant amount of funding when we got our funding for the Stabilization Center. So at that time, but now their address on here is actually Redmond, but you're saying they've got a new office in Bend?
That is what they're calling their primary services location is downtown Bend, yes.
Okay.
And so Commissioner DeBonne, they, they connect families and individuals with private and public resources in a multitude of categories, housing, health, employment, social security, basic needs. And I apologize, I don't know the origin of their funding, but I can find out.
And one of the things that makes them unique is they really try to bring, they try to bring access to services to people where they are. So they would, they would go to, they would go to an authorized or, or, we don't have one yet, but they would go to an unauthorized homeless camp and try and get people plugged into health services or, you know, housing vouchers or things like that. And, and, you know, so in a lot of ways, I, I think that's one of the things that makes Thrive, you know, exciting is that they, they, they really try to bring access to, to these services to, to people where they are. And I would, I would support this with, with 500.
Uh, so I'm not supportive of this time, but man, I want to get to know what's going on there. And this could be the, you know, part of our, our whole homeless managed camp, whatever we're doing in the near, very near future. So I'm showing a lot of excitement, but I need to know what's going on there.
Yeah, I mean, it's not all about homelessness. I mean, they, they might bring, you know, they might help people get signed up for OHP who have a home but don't have health insurance or, you know, things like that. But, but again, I, the concept being go to people where they are and where you, where you can find them. Because there's, there's a lot of benefits and opportunities that are available to people that they aren't taking full advantage of.
Um, Laura, I'll just do 200. I'm, um, I know that they, um, they do run an amazing program, so hopefully we can help them a little bit.
All right, thank you. Last for this category is the Treehouse Therapies. So as a reminder, Board Order 2020-036, approve the Treehouse Therapies request for an installment plan for the payment of their SDC fees. So the cost to them is $1,419.90, which is due each year in July and January for 10 consecutive years. So they are requesting this amount and this would cover their July SDC fee payment. These fees are for their newer Redmond location, which allows them to provide an additional 200 visits per month.
So I know that, yeah, we, I've been involved with this originally. And this is a, it's going to have to be kind of a standalone ask each time they want to do this. But I don't remember that we made a long-term commitment to SDCs. I'm, I'm just thinking, and it's probably verbally, I don't know that we're, do you remember, Tom? So.
I believe we did.
But for the next
Might not have been the best idea, but
10 years, but I think it was the first few is what I was thinking. But as I say, they can always ask, oh, there's no, nothing, nobody did anything wrong here, I just, what was the
The original approved amount was the first two installments, so
Yeah. Which have already been done, yeah, so, yeah. So this is just asking for the next one out of the kindness of our hearts.
So, um, so we, these were SDCs that were due to the county. And we forgave two years, is that?
Uh, we, um,
I think this is in the rural, right? So this is in Redmond.
In rural.
And it was a transportation
Like it was a converted farmhouse, so.
Yeah, so it was a transportation SDC is what I'm thinking. And there's, there's a choice to be able to do it over a long period of time. And it was just kind of the discussion back and forth as they came online. Did they ask us for a full waiver? And we said, no, let's do some of this, so.
Maybe we could renegotiate their interest rate, it's at 4.9%. Maybe we could cut that in half or something.
Well, and that's
You know.
A rule by anybody in the rural
Really?
For the SDC, so we want to be careful with that.
Okay, we wouldn't want to do a new precedent, but since we're saving money with our refinancing, yeah.
Well, and I mean, the, I think the statement was, you know, let it, help us get started and we'll be good to go. So there's a conversation in there, you know, for me personally, I'd love to talk to them right now, so.
I mean, my impression is this is an organization that's providing, you know, unique and really important services in our community and, um, you know, well, we definitely want, we, we want children to have access to, you know, to, to, to health services that are important for them to be able to thrive and become functioning members of society. If, I, it sounds like a very worthy organization and, you know, and, and facility to, to, to invest in. I'm, I'm wondering if there's, you know, some other source of funds that we could just say, yeah, we, we're going to cover, we're going to cover this amount and you don't have to come to us every discretionary grant cycle and ask us for $1,400.
So yeah, at this time, I'd like to put zero down for me and have a conversation with them, just to get to know them again, what their status is.
The fact that they give $80,000 worth of free care to children and families in need, they have 300 on their waitlist, they're serving over 600. And as we hear repeatedly, children can sit in the emergency room at St. Charles. They can sit there forever, you know, they sit there for a couple of days because there's no help here. You have to send your children over to Portland, wherever to find, you know, if you really are dealing with a enormous problem. And when those kids come back, they need some, you know, some kind of help. So I really, I'm happy to do $500 and, you know, I know there is such a need and there's such a shortage. And I'm happy to step up for this.
Tom, um, based on what you know about what is and isn't eligible for ARPA, is this something that we could conceivably just convert to an ARPA request and kind of, in one false swoop, you know, address this whole, this whole amount?
Commissioner, honestly, I don't know enough, I don't recall enough about Treehouse Industries to know whether they'd fit within the, you know, rather broad categories of ARPA. So I'd be hesitant to say definitively that they are without learning a little bit more, refreshing my memory on what they're, they're all about. There are, you know, based on your earlier comment, there are other discretionary sources that could be used. I can't imagine that it's a, a ton more, I don't recall the overall amount. As Commissioner DeBonne said, this is a, an allowance that's built into our SDC code that allows a property owner to basically finance their SDC charge over a set period of time with a set interest rate. And, and I, and I'll, you know, go by what Laura said in terms of the, the original commitment of, of two years. So beyond that, this would otherwise be, you know, a, a debt obligation of them to keep current. So if you like, I can, we can bring back sort of the, the bigger picture on this particular situation in terms of the balance remaining on their SDCs and some options for, for the board to consider. And if it is, turns out to be eligible for ARPA, we can fold it into that process as well.
I, if, it, it sounded like there was some interest in, in, you know, having a broader discussion with, with these folks and, and, you know, taking a look at the situation. And, and I would support that if, if there's interest across the board.
I want to talk to Treehouse Therapies.
Thank you.
I'll go out there and see them in fact. So two fundraising requests.
Yes, so first fundraising request is Family Access Network requesting $3,000 for their annual luncheon. They are planning an in-person event for April 2022. And this is their largest fundraising event of the year. Last year, they raised about $110,000, which provides advocate services for 1,100 disadvantaged children throughout the school year.
Uh, my thought is just the $2,500 is, is the nice kind of square amount for an investment like that. And they're asking for a little more, but that'll hopefully empower us to help somebody else too. If there's support for
Definitely 2,500, a minimum. They do such a good job.
Yeah, just an idea.
That sounds good to me.
Okay, there you go.
All right, and our last request for today is Mountain Star Family Relief Nursery for their fundraiser as well. They're asking for $2,000 for their Birdies for Babies event in August of this year. The golf tournament will be in person, but the silent and live auctions will be held virtually. This is also their most important fundraiser of the year and accounts for about 30% of their total fundraising budget.
I would think it'd be hard to play golf without being in person. I'm glad to know that they're going to let people on the golf course. And definitely the 2,000 sounds like a good request to fulfill.
And I agree also, okay.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, Laura, I love your new program.
And thank you for the binder, very organized for us.
Better project.
And reminder, when is the next deadline for our community to apply for our next quarter? September 30th, okay, so please, if you want to be considered, get your application in by September 30th? Okay, great.
So we do have 11 o'clock time certain COVID update today. So we're working our way through, there's this estimated time on this next item was 10:30, which we are right on schedule. So item number eight, acknowledgment of city event emergency declaration. Nathan Garbey's with us online. And John, if you want to join us at the table, you may. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for allowing me to zoom in. I had a meeting in Bryan Village just wrapping up, so this worked out perfect for me. So sorry to be online. Just wanted this request from the city of Bend forward to the Commissioners for acknowledgement. City of Bend declared an emergency related to the public health from heat as well as related to fire danger and, and use, restriction of use of fireworks. And City of Bend Code 1.60.015 requires that City of Bend Declaration of Emergency are routed to the Board of County Commissioners through emergency management at the county. And so we're bringing this, uh, declaration we're bringing this, uh, uh, declaration before you for acknowledgement. Uh, and I believe, uh, if you have any specific questions related to the order, uh, John Skidmore from City of Bend is, uh, available, I think in front of you to.
Right.
Uh, answer those questions.
Uh, well, yeah, could, could just give us the scope of the order. So it looks like it's.
Sure.
In place, and it's got an end date, too.
And thanks for having me, Commissioner. Um, and, and this is kind of a strange one. Your, your, your legal counsel and our legal counsel have been going back and forth. I don't think it's really customary for city emergency orders to be adopted or acknowledged by a county commission. So I know that our, our legal counsel is looking into the origin of that. Um, and I think it's great for the coordination that, that we're both aware of what, what emergencies we're, we're seeking to, uh, to really manage through. But the, the scope of this emergency order, uh, I think we issued it Ju-, June 28th, which went through July 9th. And that was in response to the extreme heat, the heat wave we were having. It, uh, provided a little, a little bit more flexibility for the city to address the humanitarian issues primarily related to our unhoused population. Uh, and one example of how we were able to flex our, our typical, uh, rules and regulations, we were able to set up a, two cooling, um, tents up on Hunnel Road that typically would have required us to go through a right-of-way permitting process, et cetera, et cetera. And so, uh, we were able just to, I guess, a little quicker, address that issue by setting up those, those two cooling stations on Hunnel Road. It also had an accompanying, um, personal use fireworks ban based on the heat, based on the drought that we're in, uh, water curtailment, as well as the extreme, uh, dry fuel conditions that are in Bend and, and around Bend. Uh, on July 8th, we extended this through August 31st, uh, primarily based on the continued heat. I think today's the first day that we're gonna be below 90, um, in a long time, and probably for an extended period of time beyond now. Um, and we still have, uh, issues of concern related to that heat with our unhoused population that we want to have, uh, flexibility. Currently, we do have a, a cooling station on, on Northeast Second Street, but if that hits capacity, we'd like to have the ability to possibly use, uh, city facilities if we need to establish another cooling facility or something similar. Uh, and then extending the fireworks ban through August 31st. The city council will be looking to ratify this item tonight. And I know that one of the conversations that they want to have, and that one of the counselors is gonna request a work session, is a more permanent approach to, to fireworks regulations versus using emergency orders, kind of have more of that, that community conversation about what makes sense for Bend now and in the long run, and, and adopt it through an ordinance versus an emergency order. So, um, that's kind of the summary of, of where we're at and, and how we, it came to be. And again, it is a bit atypical for, uh, a county commission to be acknowledging a, an emergency order by the city. And I know that our two legal councils will be discussing that in the near future.
Thank you very much. So, uh, this is City of Bend Municipal Code that's triggering this.
Yes. And we're still trying to figure out exactly how that language made its way into.
Oh.
The municipal code.
Yeah.
Probably in 1919.
Yeah.
Undoubtedly. But, um, as the sole commissioner that wanted to support us in, you know, uh, implementing the ban through the end of August, I thank you for coming today and the fact that you're here telling your side of the story on the dangerous situations that we have, that we're living with all over the county. So. I mean, having a fire by my house out in Sisters and, um, you know, what happened in La Pine last week, it's just, um, it's, it's really a scary time.
So for.
And our fire chief and, and fire, uh, fire and rescue staff were very supportive of this. Let's, we've got enough big issues to be chasing down. Having some errant or mistaken fire within the city due to careless use of fireworks wasn't really something we wanted to be focusing our, our resources on.
Uh, for the business sense of what we're doing here, so would this be a motion acknowledging City of Bend emergency order?
Yes, I think Nathan, uh, indicated that there's an issue. If you recall back when you did have the, the COVID issue from the City of Bend come forward, the board at that time acknowledged it and did not approve it. The code actually says for county commissioner approval. Um, and I reached out to the city attorney's office the other day and said, you know, what's the basis for this? It's, I can't find it in state statute. Uh, the other cities don't have to come to the county to get their emergency orders blessed. Um, why is it in there? And, and as John indicated, uh, we're scratching our heads trying to figure out historically why it's there. Really, unless there's some legal mandate that we haven't seen from on high, we're, I think both legal departments are gonna recommend to both of our governing bodies that it, it go away. It just doesn't seem that you should, as a body, be weighing in on whether the City of Bend chooses to declare an emergency within their jurisdictional boundaries or not. Again, you don't do it for the other city jurisdictions.
Yeah.
So we're trying to figure out what that is. But I would think the motion would be to approve, uh, the, the, the two, or, emergency orders that have been identified as opposed to acknowledge. I do know there was a lawsuit recently that that issue was involved in. Um, and, uh, ultimately, I think the, uh, the, the judge didn't get to that and was able to resolve it. But, but that issue did come up on whether was the city in compliance with this section when the county commissioners acknowledged, rather than approved, that COVID emergency order. And so rather than create that issue and to be consistent with the, the city code, I think the motion should be to approve, um, the, the, the two pro-offered emergency orders that the city's brought to you.
Well, and then, so what's the flip side look like? I mean, you know, it's being brought by staff, the city code says, but what if there's no action? I'm just, just thinking out loud here.
I don't know. I would, I defer to the city attorney on whether they would think they could proceed without it. I mean, the way the code reads, a good argument could be made.
Okay.
Then their orders aren't effective. I don't know.
That would, yeah, possible, one interpretation would be that if the commission doesn't acknowledge or approve, it's not a, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud here. I'm not really advocating for anything. I was just thinking of the flip side of that logic.
So.
It's, it's a strange.
Yeah.
Strange reference.
I move, Shute County Commissioners, identify and acknowledge the, um.
Be approved?
Approved. Okay, the local state of emergency in the City of Bend as a result of extreme weather conditions. And that's one of them. Is there? And, yeah, both of them say extreme weather conditions.
I'll second.
Two orders, right?
There were two orders.
So one's already come and gone and expired. The other one will be in place until.
Extended. So we, we extended it on the 8th before.
Yeah.
The first one expired on the 9th. So on July 8th, we extended it through August 31st.
Would that be the first amended declaration, then?
The first amended declaration.
Okay, include that in my motion, please.
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? With seeing none, or?
I mean, I, I will say, uh, I'm, I'm never sure whether I should make statements before we vote or after we vote, because, I mean, it won't affect the vote, but it.
The world's listening.
Important to say, um, that, so John, in, in case you, in case in all your spare time, you weren't tuned in the other day, we had a discussion about extending, uh, the fireworks ban at the, at the county level. Uh, what I said at that time was, um, there are many, many anthropogenic, uh, ignition sources for, for wildfires. And, um, rather than clamp down on just one without having a sense of proportion, you know, how, how big of a risk and how big of an impact that, that ignition source is, I'd like us to take a comprehensive look at, at, you know, all, all the sources of igni-, you know, all the human sources of ignition of wildfires in our region, uh, and then see what we can do, uh, you know, which one of those we can drill down on and, and, and change and do something about. One of the ones in particular I'm interested in is, um, is debris burning, uh, you know, whether we could, through, um, uh, you know, uh, offering better, uh, curbside collection, uh, extended, uh, fire-free events, or, or in other ways, uh, reduce the amount of, um, yard debris that people are trying to dispose of through pile burning at their own, at their own home. Uh, so, uh, as you're, as you're talking about ta- wanting to take a long-term, you know, a, a long-term look and establish a long-term policy around fireworks, I would love for that to, um, be a piece, a strand of that, that overall discussion of, you know, what can we do to address, um, all sources of human ignition in our, in our community?
Thank you. And I, I believe our fire chief would wholeheartedly support looking at, at all, um, causes of fire. Yeah, whether it's transmission lines, burn piles, fireworks, or anything else. Um, yeah, looking to reduce the risk is, um, is the goal. At this point, it just seems as though there's a, a lot of focus on this one particular, um, potential cause.
And Commissioners, I'd just add that I formally asked our county forester, Ed Keith, to, uh, work on that, uh, very piece of information, which he is, will do. There are evidently, uh, about nine different categories of human-caused fire starts that are available out there. Uh, so he's gonna be looking at how, um, heavy a lift that is to compile a report for you, uh, summarizing human-caused fire ignitions, uh, not structural fires, but wildland fires.
And don't forget, 85% of the fires are caused by human. So, yeah, we, you know, I used to think it was the lightning and thunderstorms and the lightning, because that's what I experienced as a child up in the Blue Mountains at my grandparents'. But clearly now, when you know that it's 85%, people have to make much better choices. There was an excellent ad on the TV this morning early showing that don't dry, drive over dry grass, don't let your chains be down. I mean, there's a lot of different reasons why we have fires, but this year it's incredibly sensitive to all those reasons. So people really, um, think clearly before you go and do something that you shouldn't be.
Yeah, what, what can be overwhelming with lightning is when you have a very large, uh, you know, storm system that moves, moves over, and you have hundreds or, you know, several hundred lightning strikes, all in a very concentrated period of time. And then sorting through, you know, uh, which of those have started a fire and having people try to respond to all of those at once. That, you know, that, that's, that's what, that's what makes the lightning, the lightning ignitions challenging.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair of votes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
So Nathan, we got one more item with you. So, uh, we haven't acknowledged in our meeting yet the incident management team, uh, State Fire Marshal, Red Team, relinquishing authority up to Shute County. Uh, so I'll just acknowledge, so you, you were able to sign this document for us, the, the county proper. Uh, I did sign the document to step into this agreement, and you were able to sign it stepping out. So, uh, I, I CC'd the board on this a couple days ago when you sent it to me. Um, so for the minutes, uh, I'd like to put it in the record. I'll read it real quick. So hereby relinquishes all authority to, to Shute County effective 7/17 at 1000 hours. This document releases the delegation of authority signed to Ian Yokum of the Oregon State Fire Marshal for the purposes of emergency response to the Grandview Fire. So that, this is the document that was signed. Um, so as I say, for a commission, if there's a motion of approval, put it in the record.
And then, so what is the, what's, how would we officially refer to the document?
I don't know.
I haven't seen the document.
Oh, you haven't? Oh, I'm sorry. I, let, let legal see it.
Okay.
But, yeah, so I CC'd board and Tom and Eric or whatever, but I didn't think.
Yes, thank you. I saw that.
So that's just, it's setting a date and time when the state fire marshal's stepping off the.
Yeah, so they're returning authority to the county.
Yeah.
Jurisdiction to the county. If you can just refer to what is added, the, uh, the documentation for the state fire marshal returning jurisdiction to the, to the county.
So Nathan, I'm just curious, have they announced the cause for that fire?
I have not, uh, heard an official cause on that. Um, being that the origin is in, uh, Jefferson County, I, I could check to see if that's been announced and, and let you know, but I haven't heard an official cause.
Okay, would be interesting. It seemed like it was in the middle of the day and there wasn't any lightning and thunder at that moment in time.
Yeah, the only, the only, um, the only fire, uh, the only one of our recent fires that I, I've heard kind of, you know, um, fire officials speak with some certainty about, uh, the ignition source was that Newberry Fire, which was a, a, a chainsaw caused fire. So. But, uh, oh, always good to, to wait, to let the investigators, uh, do their job and, and, uh, sometimes it takes a lot of time. So, so on this, I, I guess I would, I would move board approval of, um, uh, this, um, this document from the state fire marshal relinquishing authority, uh, to Dushut County effective, uh, 7/17/21 at 1000 hours, uh, for, uh, the Grandview Fire.
And I'll second it.
Any other discussion? So I would just, we'll acknowledge, so this was for unprotected land. So each fire district also signed this. This is the state fire marshal coming in to help for wildfire event. Uh, so our unprotected lands, some of the structures basically were protected for this little short period of time, uh, which is, uh, interesting situation.
If I understand correctly, uh, the, the small amount of area that falls into this unique category, not, you know, not protected by a fire district or ODF, uh, under SB 762, we will, we will become responsible for, uh, coverage. So, um, more to come on that.
Well, I, I mean, somebody will be responsible, as in a fire district or a new, new protection agency or.
Well, we'll be responsible for, for setting it, you know, making sure it happens.
Okay, so any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair of votes, yes. Thank you, Nathan.
All right. Have a great day.
And sorry, Dave. I figured, yeah.
Thank you, Nathan.
Usually don't leave legal out.
Oh, yes. Your wife's birthday is next month, isn't it? Like April, or August 14th? Is that what it is? Anyway, I'm hop- hoping you're planning something wonderful for her.
You're on countdown.
Yes, less than a month ago.
Like I needed more stress. Thanks.
Exactly.
Stress, yeah.
Well, in case she isn't reminding you, I'm reminding you for her.
Well, thanks for being her advocate.
Oh, well, of course, how important birthdays are.
Okay. So at this time, uh, next item is a, a COVID-19 update with our health department. We're gonna have a mix possibly of Dr. Conway remotely and other staff local, uh, here in the room with us. And we're gonna take a moment and transition on the video. But let's, yeah, let's just slow walk this for five minutes, because we don't really need to get ahead of the 11 o'clock hour for everybody at this time. So, uh.
Other items?
Uh, yeah, other items would be fine. Do you have any? Yeah.
I don't, I don't necessarily have any. Well, I, I actually probably do have some.
So, uh, anything else, other items for five or 10 minutes?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I don't have any, but I know Whitney has several. Uh, I'm not sure if she's watching online or can scoot down if you would like.
Okay.
Take up part of two of those.
So, uh, yeah, for Whitney's, uh, information, we may have time before noon and, uh, after the COVID-19 update is recessed for lunch, but we may have, if COVID update only takes 30 minutes, we could have 15 more minutes or 30 minutes of updates pretty easily. Uh, so I was able to attend AOC LOC broadband seminar, uh, Monday. I was, spoke for just a moment representing Central Oregon a little bit. Uh, broadband, uh, action team or advisory team, but, uh, BAT is the new terminology I learned about. So remember, we have ARPA dollars that could be invested in broadband infrastructure. Uh, I was working with, um, Business Oregon, and they sent me to EDCO, which traces back to, uh, COIC SEDS, so the Community Economic Development Strategy Document, uh, which could be a, a boilerplate for where we could invest in broadband. So it was just a good AOC LOC seminar with about 30 or 40 people around the state talking about these future broadband investments. Uh, so we do need to do some work here in Central Oregon, uh, about, you know, what would those, kind of closer to the ground investments be? As in, I already spoke to one company, and they said, if we can get from Bend to Tummelo back up to Eagle Crest, that would really help. It'd be a redundant route in some fashion, but it would also be a primary route in some Tummelo areas also. Um, but we, so we're work, some of that work's happening right now. Broadband internet.
I was on that call, too.
Oh, yeah, good.
Because I thought, well, let's see. I'd just been at Little Butter Creek with no internet, right? And it's always a reminder. And then I thought it was fabulous to hear that the female mayors from Athena Weston and Helix all had put it together quite some time ago, and they were like one of the major examples, remember, on the call? So, that they had recognized the importance of it in their, uh, rural community and had done a great job.
Well, and there, there's some times, there's just a point-to-point connection that's gonna be very expensive, and it's. to be very expensive and it's going to serve a low number of people, and it, it just needs to be committed to. Other times, there's going to be less expensive connections that'll, that'll work in the market, because there'll be plenty of customers to be able to buy into it. So that's where, you just need to evaluate each one of those situations.
You know how they're saying it's such a necessity now? And I was looking at, okay, so does that mean then that we pay people's bills who can afford to pay that monthly bill to have their service still? And we use Yellowknife, well, we just got our satellite upgraded, and of course, our son said, that's not going to cost you anything, mother, but yes, it did cost, it's going to be, the bill's going to be $10 more a month. So I'm like, you know, it, it's not, you know, it's always out there and it does make a difference at times, and I do get the speed, but still, it's definitely another expense. It's another necessity, another utility payment.
Yeah, and this is a really exciting moment in, you know, in history, when we can think about, you know, how you make public investments to get the infrastructure built out so that more people have access at, you know, at, so, you know, you, you get fiber to an area and it makes it possible for, you know, a provider to, you know, patch someone into that and charge them a rate that is bearable for them, for them to have, you know, that important access to the marketplace, to telehealth, to, you know, teleeducation, everything. So, one of, one of the, yeah. Yeah. One of the things I'm, I'm, I'll be curious to learn more about, which I believe a couple of us might have, might have individual meetings set up for, is to talk with Sun River about what they're interested in, in bringing into Sun River. I, I don't have many of the details yet, but my impression is that they're, they're talking about bringing fiber into, into Sun River, which then to me begs the question, well, could we just tack on a little bit and get it across the river to, and, and, or south, or, you know, to some of the, some of the unincorporated parts of Deschutes County? Although, I guess from, I've heard from, I've heard from, from you, that Commissioner DeBoeck, that, you know, you got great internet problems, maybe better than what I've got at my house, internet's a bad, so.
And it's a generation of infrastructure, as in, you know, you put it in and it's good for five or 10 years or whatever, and then some other place gets it and it's good for five, 10 years. So as I say, even farther south, my mother-in-law, they had a new Verizon tower and she had the world's greatest stable wireless cellphone bandwidth, but she could do, you know, video years ago. So there's just these leapfrogs that happen in the industry. So, yeah, looking for those opportunities. And, and as I say, you can look locally, because sometimes these are happened at the state and national level, but now it's county, you know, we have dollars, they're expected to be spent on this, and there's other dollars coming behind it. So knowing what's on the ground could be an optimal investment.
The only other item, other, other item that I would, I'd mention is there was a kind of kickoff open house for the SB 762 Rules Advisory Committee yesterday, where they talked about the Wildland Urban Interface Map and the Hazard Risk Maps that they're going to be developing. And I guess today was the day that they were going to release the names of the people who they've, who they've asked to serve on those rules advisory committees.
I was able to go to a property in the very south edge of the county yesterday, right where the Darlene Fire was, a private property, and just to understand what was going on a little bit. And I talked to two people that were just so thankful for the firefighter efforts out there, protecting structures, guiding the fire and stopping it in, you know, a couple days' time from the community threat it was. So there's very, very great, very positive feedback from a couple of community members, really happy that their structures are still there. So, we don't get to hear that as much. Anything else, other item, just for a moment?
Well, Whitney is here now.
Yeah, Whitney's here. I did visit the wineries located on Lower Bridge, because, you know, that is a significant agricultural area of our community. So I was down there last night.
Grandview Fire?
Yes.
Do you want to have something for five minutes or one or two items? This will be Whitney.
Thank you, Commissioner DeBoeck. For the record, Whitney Hale, Communications Director. I have two quick letters for board consideration. One is a request from the Lapine Community Health Center related to grant funding that they're going to be applying for, and so I prepared a letter of support for board consideration at their request, supporting this application, which would fund construction of, of an expansion project for them. And so I have copies of that, if that's helpful for me to bring.
Yeah, let's take a look at it real quick and see if we can get it approved. Thanks, Whitney. Thank you.
Thank you.
So can you help me with a little bit about the information on the top here? So Public Health Analyst, Office of Policy and Program Development.
Yeah, you'll notice that this specific program has a federal designation, the number for the specific funds that are being applied for, and this Public Health Analyst is the person who's responsible and kind of the contact for this specific program. So that's why I modified and addressed it directly to her, but we certainly could make that more general if needed. She's just listed as the contact person for this funding opportunity.
But that puts it in perspective. So, yeah, this is federal American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA dollars through, yeah, HRSAA, HRSA. So what's that acronym? Because we've used that before.
You know, I'm actually not, I'm not sure what HRSA.
Yeah, but it's federal. Health Resources Services Administration. So, yeah, so this is federal. Is there a motion of support in the way it's worded or any proposed changes?
I move we put our signature on the letter regarding the American Rescue Plan Act to support the health center, construction and capital improvements for the Lapine Community Health Center.
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioners. The second.
One moment. So I'm just looking at, yeah, maybe we could put an introductory statement about, you know, Lapine Community Health Center is one of our federally qualified health centers, something, something like that, just to put it in perspective from the Board of Commissioners, what this, you know, who, who we're speaking for, you know, and advocating for, just a simple little statement.
Yeah.
Certainly.
Okay, so with a proposed change that will be wordsmithed after this, let's call for the vote. Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes.
Thank you. The second letter was a draft letter that I had prepared for board consideration, thanking Mass Vaccination Clinic volunteers for their efforts. I'm in supporting the clinic over the, you know, since January, and the thought is that this letter would be made available to volunteers as we thank them and recognize them for their volunteering service. So I know that I did have a chance to send that one over email, and I also have some printed copies if the board would like to take a look, but just looking for any feedback or finalization of that draft.
So, yeah, I mean, let's take a look at it real, real quick. We're now, we're at the top of the hour, but we can do that. And then, so what's the, is it going to be sent directly to people or, yeah, what's the, I can hand it back and forth, yeah?
Yeah, I, I offered what, I offered input on the earlier draft already.
Yeah, so as I say, what's the distribution of a letter like this is the question?
At our traditional fair booth that we have every year at the fair, we're sharing space this year with health services.
I saw it.
And so half of the table space will be geared towards vaccinations. That table will have two components. One will be education related to the vaccine and answering frequently asked questions. Another component of what's going on at that table will be thanking volunteers and giving them a chance to stop by and pick up a letter and another token of thanks and giving them, I think there may be a slideshow playing at that table that kind of provides a nice overview of the work that went on at the mass vaccination.
So then we could take shifts at the booth and, you know, hand signing them like a...
I think given the large number of volunteers we had, this will be a large number of letters, but that's certainly an option. We do have shifts available at that table if you'd like to stop by and say hi. I think that it will be a cool opportunity to connect with folks, some of whom spent a lot of time at the mass vaccination clinic.
Some of them did spend an incredible amount of time helping.
So you want us to vote on this for the record or just acknowledge it?
Well, I think we just want to make sure that we have all of our, our letters prepared for the fair next week and are ready to get that booth stood up.
Okay.
It is amazing. It is next week, starting Wednesday, the 28th, through Sunday.
So I'll move approval of this letter to Mass Vaccination Clinic volunteers.
And I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you.
Yeah, the one, the one other thing that I, that I asked about was for volunteers who don't stop by the fair booth, whether there'll be a way for us to, to get, you know, this letter or other, you know, kind of statements of gratitude to them.
And I think I was going to let Chris Dode provide the formal response on that. I think we have good email contact. I'm not, I'm not sure that we can mail a hard copy, but I think we could work with Chris and Alex to email a signed copy of this to folks who aren't able to pick up as a, as a backup plan.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we'll proceed with our agenda. So this will be a COVID-19 public health update. We're doing this every other week at this point in time, so thank you very much for joining us. This will be streamed live and there'll be interpretation services also.
Morning Commissioners. For the record, George Conway, Health Services Director.
For the record, Molly Wells-Darling, previous incident commander, but I'm now moving back into my program manager role at the end of July.
We'll see how proficient I am in navigating this.
There you go.
So this is our bi-weekly COVID-19 public health update. Hmm. Oh, so you have to sort of scroll up. Okay, so our case numbers have gone up slightly in the last two weeks, up to 77 in the last full week ending Saturday. So this is a slight rebound in cases, but certainly far below the peak that we had that was sustained between Mother's Day and well into June.
I think there's news today about another death or two on top of this 85 number. I think it was just.
I actually don't know, but.
Those deaths came out yesterday, so on the OHA report.
To 87?
Actually, and one of them was from May. It was almost six weeks ago when they died at St. Charles. So it seems so strange that it's just popping up now.
That's what I saw too. I think, so is that 87 now or is that 85?
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering. Do we know?
Excuse me?
If the number is at 87 total deaths or is this 85 through yesterday's?
They were reported yesterday, I, I conjecturally, I'd say it's likely 87, but I do not know.
Yeah.
We can certainly find out. The slides were compiled early yesterday. The thing about cause of death ascertainment, as we saw with the heat-related deaths, is it's often delayed and they, they don't like reporting until the actual ascertainment's been made. So it may well be there were some, some vagaries that required attention before that, that death was duly recorded.
Didn't we have a death reported though that was actually like from last December that was reported on maybe last week? Do you remember seeing that, Molly?
I don't recall seeing that.
I, I don't know, but once again, it would not be unusual. There's, there can be disputed ascertiments, there can be a prolonged adjudication about cause of death. The medical examiner, there's the vital record, the initial vital records report may be called into question by the medical examiner's determinations. So this is a sort of a departure, they're busy slides, so I'll try to explain it well. I mean, it's actually difficult for me to see it in this level of detail, but, yeah, thanks, I didn't realize who wouldn't be able to see it this, this well. So this is, I was asked, I think it was Commissioner Chang a couple of weeks ago, I was, I was out of town, but asked about wastewater surveillance. So I have a few slides about wastewater surveillance here. The first one is, just by way of history, city of Bend, the Utilities Department of the city of Bend was the vanguard of looking at wastewater surveillance, looking for COVID over a year ago. Two and a half or maybe more than three years ago now, it was realized that you could very readily look for opiates as, in trace quantities in wastewater. And the history of looking in wastewater for polio goes back many, many years. So early in the epidemic, it was proposed that we could look for a genetic signal in wastewater. It was a startup company at, from MIT called Biobot, and they set up a series of pilot tests in different communities. So Bend was one of the original pilot sites for that, starting the, the spring of 2020. As time went on, we saw that it was, seemed to be providing meaningful information. So that was built up and built out, and at its apex, we were doing sampling in almost 20 locales in Bend, including the long-term care facilities downstream from the, the hospital, et cetera, but that was quite expensive. After the end of that pilot, we started working with Oregon State University, whose veterinary lab is running typing and measurements on wastewater. And we currently in Deschutes County are just doing three sites. There's the common influence in Redmond, the common influence in Bend, and then Sun River. So what would, this, this first slide is for Redmond, which actually has had a more direct correlation apparent between the wastewater signal. So the upper small graph is starting in the very end of November last year, and you can see that, and it's on a logarithmic scale, so there's actually a substantial amplification of the differences between just the little numbers on the scale on the left. And you can see, what I've done is I've lined up the graph on the top to conform in time to the graph across the bottom of cases by week. So if you look at it and use your imagination some, you can see there's a fairly strong correlation between the dips and the peaks. Ideally, we would be able to use the wastewater if we could process the, the testing locally. We could use this actually as anticipation and warning for the signal as the prevalence of infection increases in our community. Indeed, between having to do the processing and shipping and OSU, and they've had a substantial backlog as they're also doing sequencing, looking for various types, that has not, that has not worked out well yet, but it's, it's definitely doable, and the communities that have the wherewithal to do that locally can actually see an anticipatory signal. So this is, this is Redmond, and we've seen a very, a very strong correlation between Comparable information for Bend may tell a slightly different story. You can see that the peaks and valleys conform fairly well until we got into the latter part of the peak that we saw between Mother's Day, toward, toward the end of June. Then we saw, and that, that had been partially fueled by the largest single outbreak was back-to-school party where there were many, many, many exposures and transmissions and then downstream cases from that, that was, as school was going back in May. As the outbreak subsided, testing subsided. As the outbreak subsided, testing subsided, we think probably more rapidly than the actual case numbers. And that's illustrated by the wastewater signal here. We can see that there was a reduction in the case num, in the case numbers that was pronounced by mid, mid-May into June. Whereas the wastewater signal only fell very gently after that. It did fall markedly in the last few weeks, but we have an uptick now. So we don't know whether that may be, may precis the increase in case numbers that we're seeing. I'll talk a little more about that in a minute. So top of mind, even affecting the financial markets this week, is the most recent variant of, of concern, which is called Delta. Used to be called B16172. This is the variant that's caused so much havoc in India. It's distinguished by having a very high number of viruses produced per unit of time. So it doesn't seem to cause serious illness in more frequency, but it seems a much faster onset, sometimes just two or three days people are symptomatic. And the virologic studies are showing that there's as much as 1,000 times as much virus per cough or per sneeze. So that's what accounts for it moving very rapidly. It's why it's moved very, very quickly in India and now in a number of other countries. It's now the dominant variant in the United States. In Oregon, we're only able to do testing for cause through the state lab. So we only have a very small sample of people that meet that criteria that are being sequenced. But, but we have seen this Delta in, in, in the area here in Deschutes. And we are aware that the Alpha strain, or what's called, was called the UK Superspreader strain, was the dominant sequence that caused our serious problems here, starting with Mother's Day and into, well into May. So this is the OHA's representation of counts for the state. And you can see that Delta is prevalent in, in Oregon, not as prevalent as B117, which has been the dominant one until now. And then there's a new emerging variant of concern called Gamma, which we're not, we're not sure of the, the dimensions, how much problems there would be. This is a slide that's very difficult to read in this projection. But basically, this is Region 7, the Emergency Response Region 7, which is our area. And it also shows, is on OHA's website, that also shows that we have had the, the Delta now in rough parity recently with B117. And the reason I've gone into this level of detail is I do want to show you that one of the uses of wastewater surveillance is we are able to sequence these specimens. So we have seen as early as mid-June, both specimens from the 17th and the 20th, we have seen a substantial amount of the, the Delta variant in the wastewater influent in Bend. So that's about 11% on the samples taken on the 17th of June and 5% on the 20th.
Detective Conway, I have a question. You were, you mentioned earlier that you can look for opiates. Are they in the wastewater? Are they looking for opiates at this time?
No, that's a sep, a separate surveillance system with a separate methodology. There is still surveillance for opiates in some communities in the United States. But we currently, locally, are just looking for COVID-19 genetic material in wastewater.
Did I hear the number correctly? They said that 93,000 opiate overdoses happened last year?
Actually, the, the sad reality is that, I believe that statistic reported for last year's 93,000 deaths in the United States.
Yes.
That were attributed opiate overdose. So, moving on. We really have, we do have some very effective, basic tools.
Question up here.
Yes, sir.
Before we move on to the vaccination data, which I'm also very interested in. So just, just to give you a little bit of context, the questions about wastewater surveillance came up a meeting or two ago. You know, primarily I was asking, you know, is this as, as COVID was, we were seeing COVID taper off? We were seeing our number of tests, you know, people coming in for tests sort of taper off a little bit. My, my question was just, you know, is wastewater a good way for us to sort of track COVID? You know, what's happening with COVID in our community during these sort of, kind of lower level periods? And it, you know, from looking at this data, it's actually, you know, A, if we, if we could do it real time, then it, it would actually be, it seems like it would be very useful. But the other, I mean, the other, the other dimension of that question is, you know, at what effort or at what cost? And I mean, you know, it, it does seem like wastewater can give us some real insights on COVID in our community, but is it, you know, is it at a very high expense?
It's not at a particularly high expense if you compare it to healthcare budgets and logistical and other budgets. We are doing this de minimis checking locally as part of a multi-year funding that's come through the state, federal funding cascading through the state, where it's just a small allocation per community. However, during the time that we were able to use CARES Act funds, that we were doing many, many samples around near the end of the pilot and at the beginning of the more deliberative phase, it proved to be very sensitive. It was predictive and confirmatory of a number of the long-term care facilities. And actually, in my, in my mind's eye, and we don't have any way, we don't have any way of directly checking this right now. But in my mind's eye, this, the slope of the wastewater shown in this slide for Bend and that sort of gentle decrement is likely a more accurate picture of what actually happened with cases in Bend than the fairly sharp decrement that had to do with, if we look, we look at the testing, I'll show the testing slide later on, you see the number, the number of tests being done fell off dramatically around the time that we saw that diminishing. So there's this, I mean, part of the tension we have in the country and that we have locally as everywhere is that everybody is really sick of the pandemic and wants it to be over very badly. And there's a lot of pressure on public officials to confer a sense of progress, sometimes not as closely informed by the data as we might, as we might hope. So actually, I think this is a very, very good way of having that. To do it right, it would cost more money. We'd have to do either expedited shipping and handling and provide more money to OSU to do it. Everybody, including the staffing of scientific laboratories, is having a lot of trouble with hiring right now. So they've had, we've had some problems with logistics, but the main issue is it's been hard to hire additional qualified staff to do the illusions because it's a, it's a complicated process. We actually were involved in innovation here. The, we used to send these large carboys of basically liquid sewage through the mail. And of course, Sb handled as bio, biohazard material. It's expensive. It's heavy. So we worked on concentrating that. So we're just sending dried, dried human waste on filter paper samples now. So this can go quickly, but that requires a little more reconstruction, what we call illusion at the other end. But the technology's fairly developed, it's fairly reliable. And actually, the other thing is that this gives us a, it's a very sensitive way of looking for new sequences. So if we had more means, I think it'd be good to do some distributive sampling, probably not the 20-some-odd we were doing, but at least the hospital affluent and a few other key places around Bend and Redmond. Sun River also has a, I didn't show it here, but Sun River has an episodic pattern, and some of that has correlated with major holiday weekends. So we think the people that are residing in Sun River probably don't have much recurrent COVID, but when you have a tranche of visitors coming in, we see a very strong signal. We saw a very strong signal around two of them, two of the recent holidays. So, and that's because there's a lot of rental, rental space in the, in the various accommodations in Sun River. So actually, I think this is a really important tool. There, there's been some national conferences, and I was, I was fortunate to be a speaker at one of the national conferences recently about that. I think in the long run, this will become, if you will, ingrained as a surveillance method for many things, including opiates and infectious diseases. And I think because we've been at the vanguard of this and we, we understand it fairly well here, I think it'd be good to try to do more of this if, if we can find the means to do so. So thanks for the question.
Thanks for, thanks for unpacking that.
We've also done correlations between, I didn't bring this, the, the slide here because it's, it's very complicated to, to explain. But we've done regression analyses, looking at, you may remember, we've done trace community assessments in Deschutes County twice. One was, what was it, a year ago in Bend? And that showed a relatively low prevalence, and that correlated reasonably well with the sewage signal we were getting at that time, wastewater signal. We repeated that, the trace study, instead of in Bend and Redmond in late January because we were seeing a lot of cases there. And indeed, we had a very strong community prevalence estimate, really quite strong. I think it was something like 3% or something like that, 3 per thousand at the time. And we've seen, looking at the trace studies that have been done, the cross-sectional randomized systematic sampling in many communities now around Oregon, there's a very strong correlation between the wastewater signal and the trace prevalence estimate, where Redmond ended up being, it wasn't the highest. Hermiston and Ontario have had higher ones associated with large outbreaks. But that was quite high and there was a strong sewage cycle, signal that corresponded to that, whereas the Bend one was at the low end. So we do have a graph for that. Happy to share it for somebody that has the patience to endure the detail.
Yeah, and for trace, you have to mobilize a whole bunch of people to go door to door and you have to, and you have to have a whole bunch of people answer the door and agree to get the, get something shoved up their nose, so.
Sure. Well, however, it is, you know, it, it's good to do. And one of the things it did is it helped validate using this as a, a way of an early perception of, of outbreaks. And we're fortunate to have just enough people and just enough technical expertise locally to have been able to participate. And we appreciate your support with the, the CARES Act funds to help us look more closely at it. So anyhow, reverting to the more, the matters at hand, we have this pressure to show that, that everything's getting better quickly. And indeed, in the United States, because we have very high vaccination rates compared to almost anywhere else in the world, other than Northern Europe, we do have less conflagration of especially these new strains in the areas that are well vaccinated. In places like Missouri, which has a low vaccination rate, they're having real havoc. Their ICUs and emergency rooms are overflowing currently with Delta cases. It's also true in some of the southeastern states. Here, I'm hoping that we'll be protected from that, but we just have still basically the same materia medica and the same tools, which is vaccination first and foremost, social distancing. I appreciate that, even though we're not masked, we're at some distance in this room. And then masking. And masking has become very unpopular. And the federal agency, the CDC, hasn't, has put out a message that people that aren't vaccinated should be wearing them, that they should still be in crowded public transportation and whatnot. But there's also this idea that it's, you know, licensed to go without if you've been fully vaccinated and you're in an outdoor, indoor, in an outdoor environment. I think the Delta variant may change that. I think as it becomes more prevalent, we may end up putting masks back on. I understand it's going to be kind of a high threshold to convince people to do that, but that's, that's a reality. In the interim, the thing we're still encouraging is really everybody that doesn't have some relatively rare contraindication to getting vaccination, be vaccinated. We're hopeful that there will be a child vaccine for under age 12 approved in the next few months, possibly even sooner. We had hoped to be able to immunize schoolchildren before returning to school this year. That hasn't happened. But hopefully, early in the school year, we'll have that opportunity. So, and then I think there's been a lot of talk recently that some people have had trouble with access to vaccines. So we're trying to, per your advice, Commissioner DeBonne, make sure that, that access has been very convenient. And Molly will talk more about that. But there's also a lot of hesitancy that's just based on wrong information. And I think there's now a concerted effort in our nation to try to clarify that without questioning why that ever would have arisen, to try to clarify that and reassure people and encourage them to get vaccinated. So we're doing that locally. So we're broadly in the state for Oregonians 18 and older. 70% of people have gotten at, at least one dose of vaccine. But this isn't really where we need to end up. Where we need to end up is with everybody fully vaccinated, at least at, for, for effective herd immunity, at least at 80%. And indeed, OHA has set a goal, which I think Molly may talk a little bit about as well, of all people that are racial and ethnic minorities being vaccinated at a rate of at least 80%. I think we'll, we'll be moving toward that both nationally and locally. This is the vaccinations rates by age group. You can see that we're very, very good at vaccinating, been very successful at vaccinating elderly persons. And we're ma, we continue to make progress all the way down to the 12 to 17 age. By race and ethnicity though, this is, this, there's a lot of work to be done. Looking at this graph, you can see that Caucasian and Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islanders have a high vaccination rate, roughly two-thirds locally. And one of the reasons Native Hawaiians and Pacific Islanders have a high vaccination rate is they had a distinctly high incidence of COVID and very high mortality rate in Oregon, on the order of, I think there was a relative risk at one point of 27. So very, very high rates. So there's been very assertive outreach across the state. And there's a number of Pacific Islander advocacy plus medical service groups in the Willamette Valley that have, have helped other communities. So, so we're doing reasonably well there. However, our largest racial and ethnic minority in, ethnic minority in Deschutes is Hispanic individuals. And that's by far our largest minority trending upward toward, I believe, 10% of the population. But we only have vaccination rates of about 40% in that group, a little bit better in Asian individuals. So we're doing our best to organize, organize that. And then African-Americans have the lowest vaccination rate in Deschutes currently.
And this slide that you're, that slide you, that we just looked at, that was for the state of Oregon, that's not local?
That's local.
Oh, that is local.
Yeah, I think this is the Deschutes.
This is local?
These are our local statistics, yeah.
Yeah, we're actually, the, we're having a, we had a very long conversation yesterday about this. So the state has set a goal of immunizing 80% of eligible people that are in any of the racial and ethnic minority categories. And we're really doing our best to do that. There's a dashboard that shows how many we're immunizing per week. And we're, we're actually, we're fallen more or less in the middle of the, of the counties, but it's, it's very, very far short of where we need to be. And it's a very complicated thing to approach because you have to persuade people, you have to make it convenient, and you have to do it at a scale that's appropriate and frequent enough, we think, that it, it becomes quite costly. And we, we're having a lot of trouble staffing, like we, we, we've done a number of events. We've either been involved in or observed or organized a number of events. And when you hold some event where it's sort of a fiesta type thing, it actually draws quite a few people. We had one where 60 individuals were vaccinated, but it's very arduous. And staffing at, particularly with the professional staff, nurses, et cetera, that can administer the vaccine is a challenge. So we're talking about how we might be able to stand that up more at scale, similar to maybe using even some of the volunteers that we used in the mass vaccination at the fairgrounds. But the logistics of that... But the logistics of that is complicated, so we're sort of wrestling with it. And the cost will be substantial for us to do a really effective job.
We have a number of efforts in collaboration with our CBOs in the community as well and Mosaic and VAM, and like Dr. Conway said, doing a lot of pop-up clinics. And we have our promotores who are reaching out into the community at Latin or Hispanic-owned businesses. We're going into our Asian-owned businesses as well to really just try to educate, let people know where the vaccine is, where they can get it, and also, you know, setting up for transportation for people if they need transportation, so to make it as convenient as possible.
So we're doing our best to lower barriers, but I think there's a lot more we could do proactively, and we're trying to figure out how to organize and how to fund doing that. This is our test results for the last week. And you can see that the, here this, you can see that the, we have a slow upward trend in the testing positive rate on the order of 3.5%, but still very, very far below the peak that we saw a month ago or so. But the number of tests being done is small, and we don't know whether that just reflects lack of necessity or whether the people are not inclined. We're hearing a lot anecdotally that people don't want to be kept away from their workplace, they don't want to have to quarantine their kids, et cetera. So there may just be an overall reluctance to test, partially because of a sense, once again, that the pandemic is over. And unfortunately, I'm not really confident that that's accurate. As far as getting tested, we certainly encourage people before and after travel. The availability of pre-travel testing has increased recently. We have information about that on our website that Molly may talk a little bit more about. Certainly, if people have symptoms and then if people believe they've been exposed or they had a very high-risk exposure, let's say you were sitting in an aircraft, on a bus for hours and somebody was coughing on the back of your neck, which I had happen on aircraft a few weeks ago, you know, getting tested the week or so later would be a prudent thing to do. Testing for travel, most places that require this, and Hawaii is the one that we're most aware of, require a PCR or at least a molecular test, one of the fast molecular tests or NAT tests. And it has to have been done within 72 hours of your impending travel. And then we have at our site, we have a slash COVID testing extension on our site, and you can go, there's a little navigational tool there that allows you to select whichever community you live closest to in Deschutes or in central Oregon, and then see what's available locally and what their offerings are. It's important to call ahead though, or at least look on their website, and many of them require a prior appointment and there's various other things. So you need to check any of this information before driving anywhere. And then we think that this is an important protection. And indeed, the Olympics started a few days ago in Tokyo, and they're relying very, very heavily on testing and immunization as the tools to try to keep the athletes and the staff safe.
So are we, I have a question, excuse me for interrupting.
No, no.
I was hoping you would say something. Are we still giving the Johnson and Johnson shot? Because according to what I've been hearing, it's only 67% effective against the Delta variant. And I'm wondering, you know, I do think people need to know that.
I'd be happy to answer that. So because we did, one of the recorded deaths from the thrombotic syndrome in a woman of reproductive age did occur in Oregon, we had not been promoting the Johnson and Johnson vaccine since that, and that, since that word was pressed a couple months ago. Since then, there's been an additional complication of Guillain-Barre, which is a rare neurologic disease that causes some extent of partial paralysis. In most cases, it resolves, but in some cases, it does not, and in some cases, people do die of it. These are both are very low frequency. So we do have people coming in, though, to our pop-up clinics that want a single-dose vaccine, and they want to be able to be in some setting that requires being fully immunized. So the conundrum is that if you take the, one of the single-dose vaccines, and the only one available in the United States is the Johnson vaccine, then you're fully immunized within that three or four-week interval after the initial dose, whereas anything else that requires a second dose, you're at least six weeks from being that. The other thing is that some people are not that inclined to get vaccinated because of fear of needles or whatever, so getting one vaccine has an appeal over two. So what we do is we very actively counsel people about the potential hazards and the reduced efficacy of the single-dose vaccine that's available. But if they do ask for it, and we provide that counseling, and they decide they want to go ahead, we will provide it just on a request basis.
And it is being provided in some of the pharmacies throughout town as well.
It still is. Okay, I just thought that was a bit disappointing.
Well, so we have to have a little perspective. First of all, it's a pretty average vaccine as far as overall safety and effectiveness. If you look at recent history of vaccinations worldwide, 67% protection against a highly infectious, potentially lethal strain of a pandemic virus actually is a pretty good vaccine. But our perspective has shifted in the United States because we have these really near miraculous vaccines, the mRNA vaccines, which have very high effectiveness and continue to have very high effectiveness in this. Unfortunately, the technology for that is just developing, and because it has, because the way that it's produced right now, it's a very, very fragile, very fragile vaccine. It has to be handled at extremely high temperatures. So we're trying to strike the right balance, and there's a lot of development work being done, making the mRNA vaccines, which are much more effective and safer, more durable for distribution and administration. But we're a ways from that. So in the United States, we have relatively, United States, Northern Europe, where we have relatively high vaccination rates already, and probably quite a bit of attenuation of the pandemic because of it. And we have the ultra-cold technology, reliable power supplies and whatnot. We now have sort of a new normal that we've set that that's what we think is a good vaccine. But these other vaccines that are being used throughout the world, many of which have the kind of efficacy you're talking about, 55, 60, 65, 70% protection, those are pretty good vaccines as far as overall vaccinology. And those ones can be, some transported just at refrigerator temperature, and there are some room temperature ones that are being developed as well. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
And then this is, I think I'm near the end of my rattling on here, but this is compelling that 97% of our hospitalized patients have not been fully vaccinated. So our take-home message is to vaccinate and test. I've already talked a little bit about masks, but really masking is still expected and required in places like shared transportation, healthcare facilities, so all of our facilities, we're still all masked, and then confined spaces such as correctional facilities. We certainly don't want to dissuade people from wearing masks if they feel they've had a high-risk exposure, or they have a medical condition that makes them more susceptible, or they just like it. I became used to this in East Asia in the wintertime, especially during flu season. Japan, everybody on the subway will be in a mask in flu season. China, very, very common in the subway, which of course.
And on the very coldest of days, it's kind of nice to have a mask on. That's what I found this last winter. But there are people that have medical issues that may necessitate, you know, long-term, daily mask-wearing, that we're, so my conclusion is, let's not judge anybody that's wearing a mask because it could be for any purpose also.
And basically, so we're continuing, we're continuing to do this in healthcare settings. I don't want to take up all the vaccine discussion time. Do you want me to cover this, or do you want to?
I'll take my.
Oh, sorry.
Ah, yeah.
I'll continue.
You can continue and do that, yeah. Okay, so for vaccines, I'm going to have to look at this too to be able to read it. But as you can see, for Deschutes County, we are at 71% for vaccinated. These numbers have changed a little bit. This is now 18-plus because the state has changed the metrics around that for our BIPOC population as well as our overall population. So these are now 18-plus vaccination rates. So in progress and fully, we're at 71%. Fully vaccinated, we are at 66.7%. We have about 4% in progress right now. And about 58% of Deschutes County overall population, all individuals in our county are vaccinated. So we still have work to do, like Dr. Conway said. We'd love to be at 100%, but we really, you know, need to be at 80% to continue to just decrease the amount of people who are getting COVID. These are all of our different options. So if you want vaccine, it is available for you. It is free, there's no identification required, no insurance required. You can go to centraloregancovidvaccine.com, and it shows you all the different clinics who are providing vaccine, many who will provide vaccine to anyone. You don't necessarily have to be a patient of that clinic. And then there's also a pharmacy link down there in the far right-hand corner, we can do this, that's our pharmacy link, and then the different counties, there's links too as well. You can go to our county website and see where our different regular clinics are, and then we also have stand-up clinics. So if people want vaccine, they can go here. If they need transportation to get vaccine, they can call our COVID hotline, which I'll review at the end of this presentation, and someone can help them set up transportation. They can also, by the way, ride the CET buses for free to get to vaccination.
But they need to bring their mask.
They need to bring their mask, yes, to be on transportation. So we are continuing, at least through the end of August, if not further, to have our regular clinics. So we have Mondays in Sisters at the Sisters Firehouse from 2:00 to 4:00, and Tuesdays in Le Pine at the Chamber of Commerce from 11:00 to 1:00, Wednesdays in downtown Ben Library from 1:00 to 3:00, and then Thursdays at our Redmond Library. We also will be providing vaccine at the fairgrounds. So every day at the fairgrounds from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. Where our mass vaccination clinic was before is that North Sister, I can't remember the name of that building, but the first building on your right as you walk in, we will be providing vaccines so people can come and see us. And there's a.
I think it might be South Sisters.
Is it South Sister?
It's south of the other big one.
I'm horrible with directions. I'm not the person to ask. Okay, so at our clinics currently, before we get to the fair, we have some cool things for people if they want to come in. As usual, you can receive a $25 grocery gift certificate if you come in to get a vaccine. But now, this week until we're through our fair, we're also going to be offering the option of either two tickets to the fair or an unlimited ride band, which I know that my kids would be thrilled to get an unlimited ride band, and I would be thrilled to offer that to them as well. So if you come to any of our Deschutes County clinics that were listed before in the previous slide, then you have your option of any of those. And then, of course, as usual, you'll be entered to possibly win one of our $500 gift certificates. Again, our clinics are open to anyone 12 and older. We provide Pfizer and vaccine currently, or the Janssen and Janssen, if someone really feels that they want that. And no insurance and no identification needed.
But if they're 12 to 14, don't they have to have their parents with them for?
They do have to, yes, the parents have to sign a waiver for 12 to 14. Okay, so at the fairgrounds, as I noted before, we're going to be providing vaccines from 3:00 until 6:00 p.m. each day that the fair is open. And we will also have a free unlimited ride bracelet available for individuals who want to come get their vaccine at the fair. And there will also be our regular $100 raffles that we have, or giveaways, I guess I should call it, that we have each clinic. So each day, there'll be those $100 drawings and then also these free unlimited ride bracelets if you come in.
So this is the guidance of the Board of Commissioners was something of minimal value, not, you know, because we talked about how to do these things, and then this is the next step, being able to provide a ride bracelet or those tickets to the fair. So just acknowledging, you know, this is the first time we're seeing this, and this is the efforts of our, you know, vaccine. I know we're going to be focused on vaccines for the rest of the year, basically, too, making sure that people really do have the opportunity to get that first and second shot, or just a single shot if you go down one path.
So I referenced, if you have needs for help with transportation, you can call our COVID hotline, it's listed on this slide, 541-699-5109. They're open Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 5:00, and they can help you figure out which ride option is the best and help you set up that ride so that you can get to the vaccine. Also, I neglected, I forgot to mention, with our fairgrounds, that we're also having an education booth. So if you're still undecided about vaccine and you just want more education about it, feel free to come on down, and we will give you the education that we have in terms of all vaccine-related questions, and then you can make your own informed decision.
I do want to add something, Commissioner Dare, to the answer I gave you before about the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. And that is that the underlying logic here is that that vaccine has a very high protective effect against COVID infection, even if it's just two-thirds. With the prevalence of this pandemic prevalence of this illness, the likelihood of somebody not vaccinated is of being seriously ill or dying from COVID is much, much, much higher than the likelihood of having any of those side effects of concern. So the logic, the medical logic is very, very clear, that even that vaccine, which is not, maybe is ideal, is the mRNA ones, A, because it affords the convenience of single dose, and B, because of its protective effect, is still a very reasonable choice to make, if not the choice that we generally recommend.
Thank you.
Last week, I stopped by the school board meeting, and there was, there were a large number of people there who were expressing concerns about, you know, they were expressing concerns about school-based vaccination opportunities, you know, and then, you know, kind of another connected thought for them was that they didn't want kids who are unvaccinated to have to wear masks. So this is something that, it was a lot of people. So I don't know whether this is, this is just kind of like a hot point where we're going to see that those kinds of, those kinds of sentiments and concerns showing up, but there definitely is that kind of, you know, concerns for, you know, individual liberties, skepticism about the need, you know, the severity of COVID and its impacts on our community, and the need for protective measures like vaccination and masks. And I just hope that, I was, you know, I don't know where, where we, where and how we show up to kind of engage in those discussions with people, but if the schools are going, if, you know, if the schools are going to be a hot point for those kinds of public debates, then I hope that we can support our school districts in making good decisions about those issues, you know, particularly the closer we get to the start of the school year. And, you know, I don't, I don't, you know, again, we can talk about it here, I can say whatever I want, but it may very well be that the places where people are paying attention and listening, you know, to the public debate about this is going to be places like that. And so I don't know what that means in terms of our engagement in these. And so I don't know what that means in terms of our engagement in these issues, because I do think that as, I mean, I hope as a county that we support, you know, as much, I mean, I've seen, you know, we talk about it here on a regular basis, you know, how much we support access to vaccination and taking COVID seriously and taking necessary public health precautions to kind of, you know, clamp down on this virus and shut it down in our community.
Yeah. We can reach out to our school-based team. We do have a, in our COVID response section, we do have a school-based team, and they had been working, and I think still are, but working very closely with the schools. And so I'll connect with them and have them reach out to the schools and just see if there's more that we can do to help support them. And then also, we're having some further conversations with COPA around what we can do to help support their efforts, because they're really wanting to be out there and in our community and helping get kids vaccinated, and have seen a decrease in the amount of children that are coming in to get vaccinated. So we're talking with them a little bit about outside-the-box ideas that can be implemented there. So we will definitely reach out to them.
Thank you.
We're also, as requested, and to the extent that it's tolerated, if not requested, we're providing technical information to the school district. So the day after the school board meeting you're mentioning, I had a hot, Sodaro Zodi, our public health director, and I met with Dr. Steve Cook, the new superintendent, and all of his senior staff, and the medical folks, Amy Tatum, et cetera. And it was, actually, I'm sorry, I meant Tammy, the nursing director, whose last name I'm blocking on. Anyhow, so this is really a major issue, and I think it's going to be challenging to navigate. Somewhere, we have to find this sweet spot between caution and protection, but some empathy for a very strong libertarian tradition, especially in the Western States, and finding a right balance where people are safe but feel independent and not overly bossed around.
Agreed.
We talked about things like cohorting, and as well as masking and vaccination, and I don't know what they're going to decide on each of those things, but I think that that's clearly schools are one of the places where you have parents that often are willing to share opinions and inform them. So that's something that's going to be an ongoing project. But I think, Commissioner Bonner and I talked about this yesterday, because now it's a local decision about other precautions, et cetera. If we end up with raging Delta cases, I think it'd be a pretty high bar to be able to reimpose masking requirements and constraints on commerce, et cetera, like the state did. So I think that's going to be a difficult dance, and I'm afraid it may be quite a while before we get out of this. I think this next winter, we're probably going to have more conversations, but I hope I'm wrong.
Does, is there any role for testing in, I mean, in the school discussions? I mean, that one of the parents I spoke to, she just said, you know, I don't want my kid to get vaccinated. You know, she had, she had, you know, a lot of fears about the side effects, or, you know, the, you know, what the vaccine might do to her kid. But then she didn't want her kid to have to wear a mask, because there's so much, you know, you could, so much stigma, you know, like, being the odd person out, wearing a mask in a, in school, surrounded by your teenage peers, is, you know, that's a really socially challenging thing. But I mean, if there's, if there would be a way for, you know, for us to kind of confirm that some kids are vaccinated and have the other kids kind of, you know, anonymously submit tests or something like that, so they don't have to, you know, look odd, you know, in front of their peers at school, you know, it seems like they're, if, there might be, you know, I'm just wondering whether there's some kind of configuration of tools to really effectively contain, you know, shut down schools as a place of virus spread.
Well, Commissioner, it's a good question, and it's a complicated issue. Certainly, we don't want masking to be seen as a scarlet letter, to stand out in a way that's stigmatizing. I think most epidemiologists, most medical people would prefer that we hadn't just suddenly stopped masking so abruptly. And any place where it's crowded and social distancing is a challenge. Of course, in schools, the regulations for distancing had to be accommodated, three-foot rather than six-foot for social distancing and whatnot. Certainly hoping that children that are too young to be vaccinated will all be masked, hopefully along with their teachers, just as a matter of solidarity. The older kids, it's a really tough call. As we discussed a number of times in the past, there are school districts and school systems that did proactive testing, primarily using a molecular test called the LAMP assay. But it's not only sort of moderate cost, but staffing it and the process of swabbing everybody. And frankly, a lot of the same parents that don't want the mask, don't want the vaccine, they don't want their kid being tested for COVID. They don't want somebody sticking something up their nose or even spitting and being tested. So I don't know that there's an easy, there's an easy way out of this. I think, I mean, that's the conundrum, is a lot of the same people that are prone to protective actions will be accepting of others, and the people that may be most resistant may be broadly resistant, so that even if testing would be logical, that may be another thing to be said about rather than to go along.
Well, good discussions. Thank you very much. Anything else? Yeah, it just looks like we're winding up here.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you so much. So at this time, we had a couple of other items before this, so at this time, we'll take our recess for lunch. We have one more published agenda item for courthouse expansion discussion and a few executive sessions this afternoon, where we'll reconvene at one o'clock. Thank you.
So, welcome back to Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting. This is July 21st, 2021. Item number 10, courthouse expansion discussion.
All right. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm really excited to be here. Lee Randall, Facilities Director for Deschutes County. And Kristy Bullinger is in attendance as well, in case there are any property-related questions that may come up. So, my goal for today is to touch base on the background and concept, review a few decision points for the board, and then talk about future touchpoints where the board will be seeing decisions in the future and where we'll be coming back with additional information as we move forward. So, in terms of background, the existing main courthouse is approximately 46,300 square feet. It was built in 1977 with an addition in 2004 of about 9,300 square feet. And, beginning in 2004 and 2003, when that addition at the time was being developed, that's when a concept for further expansion, when needed, 15 years down the road, 20 years down the road, to the south of the existing footprint, was really envisioned. So, that concept was developed, we further advanced it over the years. And currently, the concept is for a three-level addition to the south of the existing footprint with approximately 30,000 finished square feet, a basement with secure parking. That size of an addition would accommodate three courtrooms, potentially, to begin with, with opportunity to expand to a fourth in the future, as well as accommodate program and staff space and allow for further growth.
So, one courtroom per floor or not? So, when you say three, expand it to possibly four?
So, given the footprint and the space that we have there for the footprint, which would be around plus or minus 9,000 square feet, 9 to 9,500, that would allow for potentially two courtrooms per floor with, based on what we understand about current needs for programming and staff space, we'd probably need about one floor for those uses and then have two floors that could be developed specifically for courtrooms and along with lobby space, security space, those kinds of things. So...
Yep, thank you.
So, that's really the concept in a nutshell. Expansion of the footprint to the south, plus or minus 30,000 square feet, basement, secure parking. And really, that kind of brings us to the decision points that I outlined in the agenda request, which specifically, we kind of have them laid out in four areas. One is owner's rep. Two would be procurement method and the opportunity to move forward with developing the findings of fact for a construction manager, general contractor approach. The third would be direction to move forward with a request for proposals for design services, and that would be for an architectural team and engineering team. And then finally, direction to review the project with the Facilities Project Review Committee with a few or three suggested areas that the committee could review, including a rough order of magnitude budget estimate, just simply based on the concept and square footage, the basis of design for structural and architectural features, and that information and feedback from the committee would help inform a request for proposals. And then finally, the procurement method, just confirmation of moving forward with the CMGC method or whatever other input the committee might have for the board regarding procurement. So, that's kind of an overview of what we wanted to set up to provide an opportunity for the board to discuss today. And then finally, future touchpoints for the board. So, depending on the direction that the board would provide to move forward, those future touchpoints would be in relation to an owner's rep contract, approval of a findings of fact, were we to use the CMGC process. The third item would be a design team contract, once a design team is selected. And then finally, bringing feedback back to the board from the Facilities Project Review Committee after, at the board's direction, if they were to weigh in on some of those related issues related to the project. Backing up just a moment, in terms of the owner's rep, the role really would be that they would act on behalf of the county and provide that expertise and oversight from concept, where we are now, to the eventual transition of that facility to operations and maintenance. And on a large, complex project like this, there's a variety of stakeholders. And then, specific to the project, you have mechanical systems, security systems, security requirements that can differ from state courts to the sheriff's office, for instance, and then how eventually the county facilities department operates the facility in terms of maintenance and operations. So, it's a large, complex project, and owner's rep would be able to bring expertise from other similar projects and be able to also leverage the experience of a firm, of folks that work even into the kind of weeds on those particular issues and bringing those stakeholders together. Those are some of the, kind of a description or summary of the role that an owner's rep might play. So, I'm happy to expand on any of those areas, but I'll just kind of leave it to the board to take it from there at this point.
So, when I think of this, I think of $20 million plus. We were hoping to keep it at 20, but it's already going to be over than that. So, that's just, you know, $20 million plus is what we're talking here. We do have the state legislature committing to two judges, so it's time to execute on finding a space, building space. And then, yeah, really understanding that concept of the owner's representative, so that's basically hiring a person or a firm, whatever, for a couple of years through this process, which is a commitment, you know, it's kind of a commitment to go. So, that's where we're at today, isn't it?
And it'll only get more expensive the longer we wait, so, yeah.
Thoughts, Commissioner?
Well, the good news is lumber prices are coming down. I don't know if we're having any lumber in the building, but that is coming down. You know, everyone that's ever built a house knows how complicated it is to remodel. It's always way more complicated, and definitely, we want to do the very best job possible. And I do believe that the courthouse should be a positive statement and representative of Deschutes County, whereas I've been told that the building we work in is rather plain and, you know, we do have some kew flowers though right now, I will say that, Lee, thank you. But definitely, we want this building to look, the part it should look to represent Deschutes County and our legal system and how important it is. And the fact that we are getting two judges, no other county is getting a judge, yeah, thank goodness. And, Lee, I was looking at the history that you gave us the other day, and it went back to 1919 with 2,700 square feet for that E.J. Tucker building, but then today, you started out with, I believe, 46,000 square feet, and then you added 9,300. So, is that kind of, is that where the building, is that in today's world?
So, in today's world, we are at 46,000 square feet. The 9,300, the 46,000 includes the 9,300.
9,300, that's what I was wondering, because I couldn't quite...
So, the original, the 1977 building was 37,000 square feet, then we added the 9,300 in 2004.
Okay, yes, that's what I was trying to, and so, and we're talking about adding another 30,000 square feet.
Right.
Which does make sense. And I did hear that our judges do love the skylights.
Oh, great.
So, maybe we need to have skylights at least on the top level, right?
I was able to tour the project with Dan Hopper and checked on the roof and everything, so it's interesting and a wonderful upgrade to square them out like the way they are with new materials and the higher curb around them and everything, all kinds of good things about it.
And that's an area where we've been able to bring together maintenance and facility operation concerns, along with creating an environment that the judges appreciate and the public can appreciate. So, the look of the skylights, I know the judges appreciate that. From a facilities maintenance standpoint, our staff greatly appreciate that we, hopefully, will go into this winter not chasing leaks and will have a higher curb, like you mentioned... we'll go into this winter not chasing leaks, and we'll have a higher curb, like you mentioned, for snow. And so it's a big improvement for all aspects of the facility in that regard.
So the next, just kind of stepping through 1, 2, 3, 4 on the memo here, construction management, general contractor procurement method. So let's discuss as a board, make sure we're all kind of on the same page, understanding what we're talking about here. CMGC is the method. And is that the, kind of the one and only option that's being proposed at this point in time?
It's not. I think it's the lead option for several reasons. But as I outline below in terms of input that you could request from the Facilities Project Review Committee, it could be built on a design bid-build method, in which we contract with a design team. They prepare a complete set of documents. Those documents go out for a public review, an RFP, and then we receive sealed bids back. That would be an option, as well as design-build is an option as well, in which we would contract with a firm that would be responsible both for the extent of the design and then construction as well. And so those are kind of, and there are, you know, some blended approaches in each of those, but those are kind of the three big options that we would have moving forward. CMG offers some benefits that I'd be happy to discuss, but there are other options as well.
So then the construction manager slash general contractor is the same entity, right? That's one company or one person. And then the construction manager position is the person building, and then I'm backing up to the, you know, the person that's going to be the owner representative. So they'd be a pair, they'd work together, but one is representing the county and the product we're purchasing, the other one's building the product.
Correct. Yep, that's a great, I couldn't have put it better myself. That's a great.
I'm just making sure we're all, you know, understanding it.
Just saying summary of how it would work. And the owner's rep also would be, would come on to the project sooner. And so they really, they would help in the selection of the CMGC, which is a qualifications-based selection process for the construction manager, general contractor. And then subsequently, the bulk of the project is then bid competitively to subcontractors, as well as requirements for work that the CMGC may want to self-perform. At times, there's areas of that work, if it's over a certain dollar amount, that we could also require that they competitively bid themselves against outside subcontractors. So the competitive selection process is built in. It's just that upfront, it would be a qualifications-based selection process.
And the Facilities Project Review Committee was so outstanding. I was so appreciative that we had them looking at the parole and probation building add-on and what their expertise was across the board. So having them being presented with this project, I think, would be outstanding. And I would feel much better that we're really getting, you know, the very best that we want to get for this enormous undertaking of 30,000 square feet with acoustical seismic upgrades. I mean, yes, there's a lot of things that you're going to have to be worried about.
Well, and for a CMGC contractor, I think of it, this is an existing building, and this is interfacing with an existing building. So there's, could be, you know, unknowns or variables. No matter how much you design and engineer and bid, it still could be variables in there. So it does, I do feel that would give us the opportunity to, you know, mitigate real time with a CMGC situation.
Lee, you said you could go over the kind of relative pros and cons of these different procurement methods and kind of highlight some of the CMGC. I mean, we've just heard a little bit, but are there other key ones that you want us to be aware of?
Yeah, I think, beginning with when the CMGC comes on board. So typically, you would bring them on at maybe 30% design stage. The benefit there is that they're able to weigh in on the design as you go, and they can also provide contractor-based budget analysis. So if you're, if the design team has an option between, a simple one would be wood framing versus steel stud framing. They're able to provide that means and methods input, as well as cost analysis as you're going through the project. So that helps save time in the sense that you don't fully design something, and then, and then you do a budget estimate, and then you realize that there are other, better, more cost-effective options. So they can weigh in, in terms of cost effectiveness as you proceed. Then typically, CMGC has a benefit when a project is a little more complex. You've mentioned a few things like the tie-ins to the existing building. Another component is that this is not what we would call a greenfield project, where we're, you know, where we have a lot of open space around and room to maneuver. So there's some construction challenges there, and they're able to weigh in on means and methods as you go forward. So first of all, as I mentioned on the budget side, getting that real-time cost analysis as you go forward. Secondly, having the contractor input on design, so that you can get input on cost effectiveness and efficient means of design as you move through the process. And then finally, having that final kind of cost and budget analysis toward the end of the design process, so that you're not really going into a public bid situation where you're somewhat blind in that you have some engineering cost estimates and estimating firms' estimates, but you're out in the market waiting for that feedback. You have that feedback as you go ahead, and they're competitively bidding the various portions of the work to subcontractors as you get close to the end of that construction development plans phase of the project. Right. And then in terms of speed and efficiency, you're getting that input as the plans are developed, and you kind of pull a whole step out at the end. And that's why it's helpful to have the board make that choice early on, because then we can develop, we can integrate the CMGC concept into the selection of the owner's rep, into the selection of the design firm. And then finally, the final third step is when you actually suggest, or select that CMGC contractor.
So then, as I say, I'm still working down my bullet points here. So architectural and engineering services, so that's going to be a specific contract, kind of a package deal at that point?
Yep. So we would develop a request for proposals that would be publicly advertised. We'd receive those proposals. There would be a selection committee that would review them, score them, have interviews, and then a selection would be made. At that point, then you begin the negotiation phase with the top-selected firm. You work through to an agreement. If you don't, you're able to move to the second firm and then proceed.
And what's the content of, so that'd be complete architectural, and then I guess what's engineering, is my question?
So the engineering portion would be on the design team. It'd be the mechanical, the civil, issues related to the site work. And so the architect would be kind of typically, they're the lead of the design team, and the contract is with the architect, and then they select their subconsultants. From a mechanical engineering team, which typically would have electrical and plumbing, and then the civil engineering team. And then there may be, given that it's a complex project, you may have a security consultant in other areas that are kind of all captured with that design team as a whole.
Well, it reminds me, Lee, thank you very much for your expertise and experience in the industry, because, you know, this is a, this is a big one, isn't it? And we're doing, doing a lot of these around the county right now, a lot of different projects.
And that's also, given the amount of work that we have, having an owner's rep that can kind of be focused on this project and a firm that has resources they can draw upon is helpful in that regard. It can help keep our project management staff focused on kinds of the nuts and bolts of the facility and how that relates to our long-term operation of it, while that owner's rep is working with stakeholders, kind of overall managing the schedule, managing the interface with the various partners, and then providing, you know, real-time updates to the board in terms of progress and where we're headed.
Any other questions or thoughts? This is a big moment.
Oh, Lee, I did have a question. I'm looking back at our notes from our meeting on the 24th. And because we're considering, we have 30,000 square feet of actual building, and then the 9,900, is that in addition? So we're actually talking about almost 40,000?
Correct. And the reason I separate that out is the plus or minus 30,000 would be finished square feet, and then that additional 9,500 plus or minus would be the basement parking and mechanical space, some security space perhaps for sheriff's office. But it's kind of factored at a different, on a different scale cost-wise from.
It is factored differently, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. And we want to have really good concrete too, don't we?
Absolutely. Well, we have great local suppliers, so we'll be in a good position.
No, actually, my husband's brand-new building in the earthquake in 92, a year later, they determined that the beams were sheared in this building, and they had to move out of it in one day. So yes, we want to have great contractors that are doing quality work.
Are we ready to proceed? So this can be done as a package? What kind of items? 1, 2, 3, 4?
However you'd like to proceed.
That's a long motion.
Well.
Okay, one motion at a time then?
You could just say proceed as outlined, because I don't think you're.
Yeah, that's kind of, that was kind of where I was going with it. We don't need to read the whole thing.
Okay. Well, I'd like to give it a shot.
Sure.
I move approval of the courthouse expansion conceptual design as presented, and direct staff to proceed with project development and design, including the four elements outlined in this memo.
I second that motion.
There you go. Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Deere?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you. So on a related topic, there's a park out front we're talking about developing. And just making sure, I mean, maybe it's just a moment, just in passing to confirm where we're at and where we're going with this. I think the official position is proceed on the park out front, correct? Because we've had some community feedback and input on this topic, and I'm supportive of that. We have other ideas out there. But yeah, let's keep going down the path of making a path from our front door to the road. But, you know, there's a vision there, and it's very positive, and it's going to be very usable in our community. So I'm just confirming that let's keep going on that.
Yeah, and so we've kind of further refined that initial concept based on board feedback that we'd received previously, and we'll have some information here shortly. In fact, I just got another update today. So we have some further refinement, and we'd like to share that with the board. And then, at that point, we would be able to take some more definitive concrete steps.
Are we, so are we like midway with the design contract, or?
We have not issued that RFP yet, because we're working through refining some of that initial, those initial concepts. Our goal was really to have something detailed enough that we got, that we could receive really clear responses to the RFP from design team. So based on some of the information we'd gotten back from each of you individually, we're making some refinements to that concept.
Well, and my vision, it's going to be just a wonderfully usable green space with expanded parking. So I think it's going to be more usable, more, more of a community amenity.
And we're, and at the same time that we're looking at moving along with this design process, we're still exploring other options. So.
Okay, there we go. Beginning of a big capital project. Is there any other, other items before we go to executive sessions today?
Whitney had one more.
Thank you, Commissioners. I thought you wanted to get into the COVID update earlier, so I.
Oh, yeah, no, that worked out well. Thank you for coming back.
Yep. As you know, we've issued the news release announcing the county college program and are accepting applications. Laura let me know that applications are streaming in, and I think we are currently at about 45 applications. So we continue to see strong interest in that program. Historically, one commissioner has volunteered to work with staff to review applications and make initial suggestions on who would be offered initial positions in the county college class. And so we wanted to connect with the board and see if there's interest in pursuing that model again, and if so, which of you might be interested in participating in that process. It would likely be in the first couple of weeks of August that that review would occur.
Is it on August 7th at the night?
I believe that is accurate, although I.
No, no, that's Saturday night. I'm kidding.
Oh, it is not on those dates. No, no.
I've already committed to something on August 7th, so.
Yeah, it'll likely.
I just don't want to have two things at one time.
The beginning of the second week of August.
Second week, okay. Well, and what is the last day they may apply? The last of July? Is that correct?
I believe that is accurate. I should have printed the news release. I don't have that in front of me, but I do know we're accepting applications still, and I believe through the end of this month.
Great. Well, I even hear the second week of July, if you need, if someone, I can do it if you need me.
Any thoughts?
I'd be, I'd be interested in helping with that process as well.
There's two Commissioners. We're looking for just one, I think.
Let's find some straws.
Flip a coin. Well, as I say, so I'll offer to whoever wants to do it.
And how many slots total do we think we have? We can offer?
Laura is actually working to finalize that number with solid waste and juvenile, which are the two departments where in the past, we've been traditionally space-limited. So I think solid waste is offering to be a little flexible in the setup for their event, and that will potentially allow us to move upwards. Traditionally, we've been in the mid-20s, because we do have kind of some smaller spaces and also some tours that are conducted in vans and buses. And so those are kind of our limiting factors.
So, yeah, I'd like to, you know, see the complete group of applicants and kind of be able to review it as a commissioner, even though another commission will be involved in a selection, a first-cut process or whatever we're going to do.
And maybe staff can, Laura and I might be able to put our heads together and come up with a review process that could potentially offer that opportunity to more than one person in terms of a scoring or something similar, where we could combine scores and go that route, if that would be the board's preference.
Did we have anyone carry over from like two years ago?
Laura did say that she's reached out to folks who had applied for the 2020 class and has had people who have expressed continued interest in wanting to participate in the program. So that's great. We've also had people from the 2019 class who have remembered that they missed certain sessions and have reached out on their own accord and said, "I really need to get to Fair and Expo," and that's great as well, so.
Would we, would we ever consider running two cycles in a year to kind of make up for the 2020, the lost 2020 year?
We did have that conversation, I believe in 2019, about if we should move to a fall and a spring session. And we didn't ultimately move it forward, but that's a conversation that we could revisit. I think it's a big lift for departments, especially departments like Rode, where they really have an amazing amount of employees turn out to talk about the equipment they run. You've got 20 or 30 people out there on an evening. So I think there's recognition, at least in admin, that we are grateful that department staff really go all out for county college. And so that's kind of the weighing factor in determining if we would offer more than one session in a year.
Right, right. And I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily propose trying to do it, you know, annually, two cycles a year, you know, from now on. But, but, you know, kind of given the pent-up demand from the COVID year, you know, if there was a way to address some of that and then kind of, you know, yeah, after you've addressed some of that pent-up demand, it's just like the airlines right now, right? Then we can go back to, you know, one annual cycle. But I think it would be, if the departments are willing to consider, I think it'd be, you know, if there's a year to consider doing that, I, this would, seems like this would be a good year to do it.
It's definitely something that we can revisit with departments and come back to the board with some more information on in terms of what that would look like.
Well, I remember that last time we did have it, we did have some cancellations at the last, and we were so worried about some people, and we actually.
the last, and we were so worried about some people, and we actually got them in, so.
Yeah, there is
That's usually what happens.
And we can see if that happens again and kind of how many rooms we're going to be able to accommodate this year, but people do have things in life that come up, and so we'll see kind of where we're at as well when we get into the first couple of weeks of the fall.
So it sounds like, yeah, there
That's great.
Yep, multiple offers here.
We'll come up with a system and reach out
Which is fine.
Commissioners Adair and Chang, get that rolling. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Whitney.
So being the end of our regular agenda, at this time, we will go to executive session.